No, it's not done. There's more negotiations to be done.
But if the person in position is a God, he'll want to be committed and given an annual two or six years.
Call the town council meeting to order for Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 at 7:02 PM. Let's start first with salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just so.
Before we start the meeting, Charles Gunn was a member of the town council before. He was active in community affairs for over forty years. He served as a member of the Charter Revision Commission, mayor, deputy mayor, chairman of zoning board of appeals, chairman of planning and zoning in town of North Branford, designated June 7th, 2016, as Charlie Gunn Day. Charlie will be sorely missed in the town. He was very active and a very likable person. He did pass away. Sorry. He did pass away, that's why we're recognizing him now. Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yeah, here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Candelora.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Fawnen.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Councillor Vigliano.
Here.
Motion to approve the previous minute's meeting for June 4th, 2019, water pollution authority in town council.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelora.
Stay.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Vigliano.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Move into the regular town council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, I just would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. We have several items to add, so under nine, item nine, new business discussion in action, I would like to add the following three items. Number N, contingency appropriations. There should be a sheet by each of your desk in regards to what the contingency appropriation is. O, item O, firehouse leases. This item came up under our finance subcommittee meeting prior to tonight's council meeting. And P, employment agreement, deputy police chief.
Second.
I'll, oh, sorry, second.
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelora.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Vigliano.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
All right, we'll move into the regular town council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, economic development commission.
There was no meeting since our last council meeting.
Hark and Rec.
Their next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday.
Police commission.
Police commission met on June 10th. Chief Halloran talked about Caesar, seat, search and Caesar training that was done with the state's attorney's office. Almost every single officer participated in that. He reviewed the purchase orders for the drone, the rifles, and the truck. The commission approved a memorandum agreement about carryover of vacation time. They also moved to move Lieutenant Lovelace into the deputy chief position, and tonight we have the contract on the agenda. They talked about the fees from fingerprinting in the police vehicle used to have a new cumulative fund, which is also on tonight's agenda, and they reviewed the regional transportation safety plan. There was also a special meeting tonight where the commission approved the contract for the deputy chief police, and that will be in tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
I just have a question on the item about carryover of vacation with...
Yeah, it's become difficult where some people, a couple of people at one time, want to carry over vacation at the same time, so giving the chief an opportunity to make that decision about how many people at one time can take a vacation, a carryover.
Yeah, okay.
The moment, Dave. Board of Education, Fire Commission?
Fire Commission. Detective Robert Deco was appointed as new fire investigator. Matter of fact, I think he was just appointed last night or the night before, just recently. And there was a new thermal imaging camera that was bought to replace an old one that we had. That's about it.
Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee?
There was no meeting.
Planning and Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
At the last meeting, they were working on, still working on, planning events on farms, still working on the plan of development and conservation, and I know that today Kerry went around to some of the businesses in town with the Shoreline Chamber, the Director of Tourism for the State of Connecticut, and some of the economic development people from the state of Connecticut.
East Shore Health District Department. North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee?
We had a meeting last Wednesday. We continued to work with the architect in terms of the plans for the police facility. I think the next step is for the architect to spend a considerable amount of time with the police chief to review just what should be in the facility, and there's a discussion about now having a two-story building with a basement, so I think a lot of discussion needs to continue, and the police chief needs to have a lot of input before the group can continue. Next meeting is in July, the second Wednesday.
Finance Subcommittee?
Finance Subcommittee met tonight at 5:30. Three items that were on our agenda for discussion, one of them we added, which is the leases for the three fire companies, which you all have copies at your desks, so we'll discuss that a little bit further when we get that item on the agenda. We also talked about line item transfers. I know this has come up at council meetings previously, and it's my understanding that at one time, prior to me being on the council, that line item transfers did not occur unless it was approved by the council first, because we are the fiscal authority, and it seems to have become very lax over the years, and we seem to be approving the line item transfers after they've already happened. And we do understand that there could be emergency situations that come up, so in discussing this, Anthony is going to look, just to make sure, to see once if there's anything in the charter currently about line item transfers, and if there's not, if we need to make some kind of a motion to be more explicit about it, then that will come back at another meeting. And they are also going to discuss it with all of the department heads, at department head meeting tomorrow, about the desire of the council starting in July 1st, is that any line item transfers need to come to the council first prior to them moving forward. And we also talked about the financial software that the town uses through Walsh Associates. There were some issues in regards to the availability to the new police chief Halloran. That has all been worked out. There has been some more licenses bought. They've been transferring, the software system has some programs that are now available, but you can get it through Windows applications. So from our understanding and what was reported to the finance committee, it seems that all of those issues have been worked out, and they are also going to be talking to all of the department heads to make sure that they are all aware of how to use the system, if there's any updates that they need to be trained on, and do provide training to them so that they can move forward and everyone has the same accessibility to the programs. That was it.
Thank you. Next is town manager's report, Simple Recycling Program.
Yes, this is an item I mentioned at the last meeting, and I had a chance to gather more information about the program in an effort to see if it would work for our town as a means to remove some of the textile and other items from the municipal waste stream. So I was able to meet with a representative from Waste Zero, and they're a company that is partnering with Simple Recycling Program, so the relationship is that Waste Zero is marketing the program, and they actually make the pink bags and sell to Simple Recycling to carry out the initiative. And I know that Councillor Miller had a question about what happens to that, those items, so Simple Recycling has a hub here in New Britain, Connecticut, but their headquarters in Ohio. I'm told that their waste, that they get, the items that they pick up are, that they are collecting, they are evaluated as to their condition, so the good-conditioned items in clothing are sold to the thrift stores. Those that are in fair condition end up going overseas, and those that are in bad condition end up being recycled, like, you know, tennis shoes and things of that nature. So Savannah Herrick is the representative from Waste Zero, and she can certainly, I can invite her for the July 9th meeting to see if the council wants to vote to participate. The other half of my research was looking at getting references from other towns in Connecticut that have already done this program. I've talked to Plainville and then received email responses from another half a dozen, all speaking positively about the program as a no-cost program to the town and an opportunity to reduce the municipal waste stream. So everything is favorable at this point. I would suggest and recommend that we invite this representative from Waste Zero for the July meeting, and then you can answer, she can answer questions directly from the council if you have any more, and we could move forward with the program. It sounds pretty good so far.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I also wanted to add, under my report, if I could, an update on the roof at Stanley T. Williams. I've been waiting for a report from Eagle Ribbit, and they provided that invoice or that proposal, so I now have, I'm reviewing it, and I've got to go and get some other quotes, but they'll be able to do the work, I think close to, close to $6,000, something like that, on there. I think I copied that, I think you should have a copy in your folder. So I'm going to make sure that's on track, and we can pursue that and try and get that in the work schedule this summer if we can.
Thank you.
I have, I'm sorry, one more item that we've been talking about, the coastal, Central Coast Coalition, that five-town economic development initiative that the council had agreed to participate in. They're going through this process of identifying a business, identifying a consultant to handle some of the marketing and initiatives that the group wants to undertake. I need to have more conversations with them with respect to the administrative process. Right now, Madison is taking the lead and has put the RFP out, has solicited and has three responses and a recommendation for a consultant. They're looking at the towns for contributions, but I need to nail down the process and the structure first, so I don't have anything, I don't have a recommendation at this point, but I'm hoping to for the July, once the July meeting.
Is that going to be somebody local within the five-town area? We don't know yet.
Not that I, not, no. It appears to be, what they're looking at is a company out of Norwich that's familiar with, or at least Madison may be familiar with and has worked with before, I think. But it's going to take a little bit more discussion on that.
Next, community events and presentations. Citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence.
Good evening. Cliff Potter, Northford, Connecticut. First of all, I'd like to really acknowledge Charlie Gunn. If you were at a planning and zoning meeting, and I'm sure, Joe, you went through this many times with him, Charlie was not quick to answer questions. He'd sit back in that chair, and he'd rub his chin, and you had to wait almost ten minutes for an answer, but it was a good answer when you got it. So he was old-school, but you didn't get anything by him either, so he will be missed. Good times to go to those kind of meetings. Second thing, I'm very, very anti-toll, especially since I've heard that 95, 91, and Route 15 are going to be the low-hanging fruit, like Anthony likes to use that term for finances. It's also been a very hard thing for me to, to address with our local senator, Christine Cohen. So she's been polite, we've been corresponding back and forth. She was not aware that our town had voted in an anti-toll resolution, so I emailed Mike, and I believe her office made her aware of that. Then we corresponded back some more, and she said the budget's balanced, and I said, "Well, no, it isn't." She said, "Well, yes, it is." So I had to go to Yankee Institute on the web and send her the fact that they thought they balanced the budget, but they forgot they hadn't gotten the concessions from the unions yet, so there's still a great big hole in the budget. And luckily, Vinnie Candelora is our go-to guy, and man, I tell you, I go to him at 10:30 at night sometimes, and he's always very proactive. And he, he said, "If they can't get this money, guess what? It's going to come out of our pockets, because there is no other fund that plugs that hole." They hadn't even talked to the unions when they made this accusation that the budget's balanced, so that's still a big issue. And then Vinnie, again, answered one of my messages on Facebook, he's agreed to try to get a dual meeting with the town council and with Christine, find out where she stands, where's she getting her information from, and where does she plan to go with it to represent us? I don't know if any of you met her here yet, or have you seen her? I mean, she's no Marcus, she's no Kennedy. She, I'm always polite to her, and she'd get back to you after a while, but she's, you know, Vinnie spoils us, he's instantaneously, and his facts are right. So I'd like to see her come here, and Vinnie's going to try arrange it, and what is her thoughts on the tolls? I said, "You, it's a regional tax. I don't care how you say it, when you affect the three major in and outs to this area, it's a regional tax." You notice they're not touching Route 2. That's a direct route to the casinos. They don't want people not to go to the casinos. So, I mean, there's things here, it will kill us in town. I said, "Route 80 will become the new 95," and you'll, you know, she didn't, I don't know if she understood what I meant by that. So, I mean, there's concerns you guys have brought up, I've brought up, so I'm hoping in a way we can get a meeting with her at the town council here, and I think Vinnie's trying to organize that. The second thing I want to address is, I'm a Vietnam veteran, and a lot of us got these letters, and there is a typo. We're going to be honored in the auditorium on Monday, July 29th. And in here, it doesn't say much, so I came into the town clerks today, and I had, again, gone to Vinnie, I said, "Vinnie, it would mean more to me if you did something like this instead of Susan Weissovich." I said, "Could you work so hard for us locally?" Well, he is going to be there, but it's not mentioned in the letter, so if anybody gets the letter, come on down. Vinnie, our local representative, will be there. He's the hardest-working representative we have, and we'd be in a world of hurt without him up in Hartford. So I just wanted to bring these things up. Citizens, if you do want to get a hold of Christine, she'll talk back and forth with you, but, I mean, again, she seemed to be very, very lax in knowledge, because she didn't know about our town resolution, and she didn't know the budget had been passed erroneously with that big hole in it. So those are my comments, and I hope people respond to her and maybe correct the errors, because if she goes ahead and votes for the tolls not knowing all the facts, then we're going to suffer. Thank you.
Christine was invited, Christine's, she was invited to one of our meetings.
And did she come?
No, she didn't show.
Okay.
We don't know if she got tied up in Hartford or what.
But if you invite Vinnie, what happens?
Well, he was here that night.
Yeah.
She was supposed to be co-chairing with him, but...
Okay, so, I mean, yes, but I think that's why we're spoiled by Vinnie. I mean, again, he's so great. When you're great, you get, be great over and over again, right? So, again, but again, I didn't harass her. I said, "I'm doing this with respect, I just want to know where you're getting your answers from, because if you don't know the facts, you're going to make wrong decisions that are going to hurt all of us." So we'll see.
All right, we'll move into resignations, appointments. Resignation of Jack Crasco from the Permanent Project Committee and the Director, Board of Directors for the Regional Water Authority. Next is the appointment of Fred Auger to the North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee to replace Victor P. DiAndrea.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelora.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Vigliano.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
Move into unfinished business, discussion in action, future budget planning initiative?
I don't have anything.
Update on 9/44 Total Road remediation.
That item is on next Wednesday, City of Wallace Agency meeting.
Next is review of contract with John's Refuge.
You should, you should have a contract in front of you that basically takes the existing obligations of John's Refuge under their current contract, and because we're going to MIRA, this is essentially a hauler's contract, and it is a two-year contract, but the town reserves the right to go out for an RFP in year one, and if the town determines that it can get a better rate through the market, through the RFP process, it has the right to terminate this contract at the end of the first year. So you, the terms functionally are year one, if you look at Appendix A, it will cost the town $532,500. Year two is $550,000, and then that would be plus what you pay MIRA, but based on my conversations with the town manager, this change will be consistent, if not slightly less than what you're currently paying to John's Refuge. I think, I believe that's correct?
Correct.
And the only other, I think substantive change in here was the bulk pickup will be twice a year now, instead of, I believe it's now, is it monthly?
It's once a month.
Yes.
So are we going back to November and April? Is that, that twice a month?
I left it somewhat vague, because I wasn't sure if the town had a specific time period that you wanted. I believe I said it as spring and fall.
Okay.
Because I didn't know if you wanted to modify the dates, or maybe through the town manager's office, so that you could maximize the pickup for the residents. So, for example, if it's spring cleanup, it might be better to do right before or right after Memorial Day, so I thought we would want to leave a little flexibility in there.
Okay.
Also, in addition to the two bulk pickups, he'll continue to pick up the Christmas trees following the Christmas holiday.
So whose idea was this for only twice a year?
This was something that was raised by the vendor and was, I believe, discussed...
It was discussed at a council meeting.
At the last council meeting.
It was discussed, but it's not a negotiation with the vendor?
I think...
We can't consider maybe four times a year? What this has done is, first of all, we earlier had the indication from the town manager that there's a simple recycling program that's going to take materials out of, out of waste, which is going to reduce the amount of recycle that this vendor can have. Secondly, they're reducing us from 12 pickups a year to two, which is a big difference for the residents, and, you know, the price keeps going up, so there's no reduction for what's potentially a lot of material coming out of the waste stream. According to the material that the town manager gave us, 1,200 pounds per month coming out from Plainville, as his example. So this is a, it doesn't seem like it's equitable for what we're going to be reduced by in services and in the increased price. And lastly, I was under the impression that this town had already paid this vendor for the refuge containers, and it's in this contract that if we do terminate after the first year of this two-year agreement, we're going to be paying the vendor money for the receptacles, and I believe we've already paid for those.
I thought we...
We never paid for the receptacles.
I thought they were paid.
No, I thought they were ours at the end of the first five years.
Or, I think the first contract was four years, so I believe that it would, at the end, the natural end of the relationship with the first contract, I believe, the totes would become property of the town. I don't believe they become property of the town until that moment. And just, just by way of framing it for historical purposes, this conversation is happening because the town was approached by the vendor because of what is going on in the global market with respect to recyclables and China's refusal to accept our recyclables. Under the terms of the existing contract, there's an uncontrolled circumstances provision that the vendor believes allows him to, to be paid an additional $10,000 a month to address the issue that the market is, is suffering. I don't agree with their interpretation of the contract. I don't believe that he has satisfied that, but it's a issue of contest. Whether or not we win or lose on that would be ultimately to a trial of fact. The, so the issue was if we could, so what the town manager did is he discussed the issue with MIRA and ultimately got the town two years free recyclables to address the immediate concern of the expense to the vendor. And that is why we're positioning this contract that affords the town the ability to terminate it after one year, should you discover going to the open market that there's a better rate out there. So you should look at this as a one-year with a one-year option, although technically you don't have to exercise an option to get your second year, you just exercise your option to terminate, should you want to terminate. So it's being done in an effort to avoid that expensive litigation, because there's uncertainty as to whether or not that added liability would extend to the town.
And we discussed all that in our last meeting, and I heard that, I was present. Still, in the reading of this contract, we have a significant reduction of services to the community. I, I'm not sure that any counteroffer's been made to what the vendor would prefer, which seems to not be the type of negotiations that we should have entered into, and I think that the citizens need to understand the amount of, what the cost is for these services and the reduction that they're going to face. And I, I wouldn't say it's a sweet contract for somebody, but I don't think it's one that was as well-negotiated as I would have hoped.
And, and just so, for the council, there were negotiations, town manager and I did meet with representatives from the vendor. We did discuss the differences of interpretation of the existing contract. This ultimately, this was not what the vendor wanted in the first instance, this was a compromised... This was a compromised amount. And the vendor believes, based upon these values, this is the best service he can provide. But it was negotiated through at least three discussions directly with the vendor and then additional conversations between myself and Attorney Levinson, who represented the vendor.
Thank you for the explanation.
But this contract was also in correlation to the lease agreement, correct?
The lease agreement was, the vendor has an issue on his site because, I believe of.
The power line.
The utility company's upgrade or work that they needed to do. He needed a temporary solution to relocate some of his property. He asked the town if he could, so store his property on, on property the town is currently not using. And that is why there's a license agreement that I believe follows this.
That's right. Item D on this is the licensing agreement. And according to this, the vendor will forego their claim for the fee increase and we will, and will pay us a dollar a month for use of the property for up to eighteen months. So once again, we've got a great deal of benefits being provided by the town of North Branford to the vendor in terms of, what is it, twenty thousand square feet of, of space to, for, for his materials.
And, and just so that, again, so the body is clear. This is a, a contract before you that you are not compelled to adopt. You do have the right to reject. If you reject, I believe, we'd remain under the existing contract. The controversy between the parties would remain an issue that needs to be adjudicated. The exposure to the town is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's ten thousand dollars a month is what the vendor claims over the next two years.
Have we seen any bills on these? Have we seen any, his books to see if these numbers that he's claiming are correct?
We did not engage in a discovery of the issue beyond the conversation. That would, that was something that customarily would happen once litigation has begun.
So these are all his numbers?
These are all his numbers that he presented to us and some research that I, I looked at online and read about the, the subject matter and saw what was going on in the global market, but I am by no means an expert in the industry. So really, the, the issue is, for this body, whether or not, under the circumstances, you want to alter your current relationship to go into the contract that is before you so that you have continuous service for at least the next year, while you have the opportunity to explore what the, the market will provide. If the market provides a better value, you can go to the market. If it does not, you can stay with this for year two. Or alternatively, you can reject the contract and the license, and we will likely end up in litigation with the vendor over the interpretation of the contract. So that's, that's, that is the choice.
And, and if we enter into the litigation, we will have access through discovery to all of his records for all of these purposes?
He would need to establish, he would have a burden of establishing his damages. And I believe that would be something that would be part of his damage calculation.
Now, if the market's changed, you know, with the tariffs or whatever's happening, is that in here where that will be, or?
It's no, this contract is no longer, this is a hauling contract. All he does under this contract is picks up and brings it to Mira. So that is an issue for Mira to contend with, not for the hauler anymore.
And the other part of it is, is if we didn't do the contract, is technically his contract would expire in?
I believe.
The end of June. I mean, we would have, we don't have any ones for July first if we didn't.
No, his contract doesn't expire. He threatened to terminate.
Right.
July one.
Two, two years.
What's been spoken in this dialogue, going back and forth, is a crucial element, which is performance. We can go to court, that's a wonderful thing, as long as the guy's still performing. If he says, you know what, you figure out what to do with your garbage, we'll go to court, right? We're not picking it up. Now we got a real problem, because that happens July one. And I don't know if you guys forgot, but he stood right there with that microphone, wiped his hands together and said, I'm done July one.
Right.
I'm out of this. That's a bigger issue. That is the real issue.
Right, that's what I was getting at, is that we don't do anything, but we have the right in this contract to, six months from now, do an RFP, go out for bid for year two, so that we have time to plan for it. Right now, we basically have nothing. We have, we have eleven days.
So he's, he's willing, he's okay with what you have, what you have in front of him?
What is before you, Attorney Levinson has advised me that his client, the vendor is.
Will, will sign it.
Will sign it, correct. And, and again, I, I believe the, the purpose of it was to maintain the service for the residents, not create disruption, stay within your existing budget. Because where we found ourselves, one of the first conversations we had is, you came after the budget process. So to the extent that we were now going to explore going to the market, it was too much of a risk to our budget, because the budget had already been established based upon the existing contract. So we don't know what that market is going to bear. And that's why we said, all right, we'll, we'll make this change to accommodate this situation, but we're going to reserve the right to go right out to the market. And if we go out to the market in July or August, put that in RFP for new services beginning July first of next year, if you feel you got better, you're going to get a better service that way, you're in this contract for one year.
Well, due to the uncertain, uncertainty of the market, we know trash haulers are not getting paid for recycling anymore. We know they are paying for recycling anymore. So that's the question George asked. We know recyclers are paying. We're not sure of the dollar figure that Johns is paying, but we know they're paying.
That is correct.
We got a deal for two years for free to sign with Mira.
Mm-hmm.
And that is the option we're taking now. And we changed the, the agreement from him doing the whole thing to the town picking up the tab for the trash and him just hauling it. So that, that is, that is a benefit for the town in a way, because we see what the bottom line is going into the trash.
And, and it keeps you within your existing budget. And that, that was our primary focus, is to try, to keep you within your existing budget. I believe you're fifty or eighty thousand dollars below. If everything holds true factually under this first year, I believe you'll be under your budget by fifty or eighty thousand dollars. So that, that was what we had in our mind. We were talking, thinking about the cost of litigation, which is an immediate expense, and keeping you within your existing budget with continuity of service.
Were we, were we in his old contract, paying the tipping fee on the garbage?
He was paying everything.
He was paying it.
But the, the, the contract price was.
In the eight hundreds?
Eight, eight or nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, correct.
So we have no way of knowing what the tipping fees are?
Well, we have, we have a report that he had provided, and that's how I, as I spoke to the last, or previous meetings, on that average that we have as submitted by, by the contractor of about forty-one hundred tons a month. And that's where I said, you know, the numbers work, if those are accurate. And again, whatever we do to, you know, even the simple recycling is only going to be a miniscule thing, but over time, it could, you know, add up. If we're hitting the forty-one hundred or lower, we're, we're good. If we start hitting forty-five hundred a ton, I think we're going to start to have problems.
So I agree with you, George. I, I don't like the way this played out. I don't particularly like the choices that we have, but I don't see any other choice but going forward for this.
Well, we've got eleven days.
Because we don't know. And, and I was here, you know, and the last time we had a contractor and the town was paying the tipping, the way we got to, you know what? No. We're not paying the tipping fees anymore, because somehow miraculously, when you hire a garbage man and the town pays the tipping fees, the tipping fees go through the roof. So, and I was here when that was happening. So then we decided, no, you know what? You guys, you guys own the whole thing. So now we're going backwards in the middle of a contract, according to you. According to them, they can walk away July first, but, you know, we're not going to win, we're not going to win going to court, I, you know. We're not going to win if we have no trash pickup July one. So I think the only thing we can do is swallow hard, do this, and put it out to bid early enough and, and with a good bid spec for, for next year. And if everything comes in higher than their year two, we take year two. But we'll have a good history then, because we don't know, you know. If, if we have a document that means nothing, that says forty-one thousand tons or pounds or whatever of garbage a month, at least we can watch that and say, oh, how did we, how did we get to fifty? How did we get to sixty? I, I don't know, I, I don't see any other options, so I tend to agree with, you know, we have to go forward with this, but.
The big, the biggest part of this, because it's such short notice, is that there is no bulk pickup starting July first. And for a lot of residents who, you know, they rely, you know, it's, we went from every week to once a month, and now overnight, we're going to twice a year. So there is nothing for July, and we really need to do a good job, an excellent job, of getting that word out there. That July first, there is no monthly pickup.
I already see bulk pickup out.
Well, I know, people put it out every week, waiting.
Yeah, it's going, it's going to pile up.
But that, that is going to be a concern, because there is no advance notice. At least when we went to once a month, we had several months to let the public know that this was going to be happening, because the contract was settled like February, March, before the budget season. So we had a number of months. We don't have that.
Do we know what we, what we pay per ton?
I don't recall. I think it's, we're around ninety dollars a ton. I think Mira's new contract with Mira is going to be eighty-three. I, but I'd have to look that up, I don't.
I, I thought in the information that he sent us in regards to the recycling and everything else, that the figures that he provided in the letters, it was over a hundred dollars a ton.
Where he is currently?
Correct.
In Shell.
Correct.
Correct. He was paying, and what part of, he doesn't have the right to stop. My position, under the existing contract, he doesn't have the right to stop performing. His position is he cannot afford to perform, and therefore he will stop performing, because the existing contract is costing his, is economically a loser for his business and other contracts are subsidizing this contract. So he'd rather risk the litigation than continue to incur this loss to his business. So I don't want anyone to think he has, I, I don't believe he has the right to stop performing. I believe under the existing contract, he's obliged to perform. He's saying as a matter of business, it doesn't make sense for him. And that's, so I, I, I take that genuinely to say, if we don't alter the terms of the relationship, you will not have garbage pickup as of July one, and you will have to figure that out. Or we can accept this for what it is, stay within the existing budget, go out for RFP in July or August, have enough time, setting July one of 2021 as a potential start date, and have enough time to truly evaluate what's in the best interest of, of the town. Because presumably, whatever new relationship you'd enter into would be for a multi-year contract that would extend beyond the two years that you're looking at. So I just want to clarify one thing, or one thought. So I want to make it clear that when, when we were involved with our tipping fees getting out of control, it was a different vendor. So I just want to make, make that clear, that it wasn't, it wasn't this vendor, so.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the contract as submitted for John's Refuge for a period July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, of two thousand twenty.
I'll second that motion, but in terms of comment, I, the only thing I make sure everybody is aware of, this goes virtually hand in hand with the license to use the town land. So if anybody anticipates or has reviewed that license and has reservations, they want to discuss it before we vote on this contract.
Okay, well, we can hold the vote on this and discuss the license.
Yeah, we'll move into review of license agreement for ten thousand five, Middleton Avenue, to John's Refuge.
So again, what's before you is a license agreement. As, as I stated earlier, this agreement was the result of conversations with the existing vendor that picks up the garbage in the community. He's currently experiencing an issue on his site caused by utility work being performed by United Illuminating, which is forcing him to relocate his equipment, and he needs a storage location for that for some window of time, not to exceed eighteen months. And through the conversations, it was discussed that because the town has land that it is not using and this license will not interfere with the town's use of that area, that, that would be a reasonable compromise as part of a solution to avoiding the contest with the existing garbage contract.
I have two questions to that.
Yes, sir.
I see the word that it's a non-exclusive revocable license. Is that clearly understood, or is that going to be a change of circumstance if we revoke?
It is clearly understood that should an event occur that, that the town requires this, that we have the absolute right to terminate this at any time for any reason. He does, he is asking for a reasonable window of time then to relocate his.
I'm not talking about being arbitrary. I just want to be sure we've got the right to terminate.
Yeah.
Secondly, the end of that paragraph, the granting paragraph, it says, "Licensor shall be solely responsible for the maintenance of the licensed area during the term of this license." What maintenance? What is it we got to maintain?
Truly, there's, there should be none. It's clearly just open space. But to the extent that, to the extent that he wants, I don't know, let's say there are, there's invasive species that are growing up. If he puts his dumpsters there and they're starting to be, you know, attacked, if you will, by the vines growing, we're not going to be, we're, the town is not obligated to maintain the area that he's occupying. So we're not going to, we don't have to mow that lawn, we don't have to trim the trees or the bushes or anything like that. He is going to be responsible for the maintenance of the licensed area.
But that's not what it says. It said, we're the licensor, aren't we?
We are the licensor.
And it says the licensor.
Yeah.
Shall be solely responsible for the maintenance.
Hold on, let me pull this up.
Bottom of the first page, paragraph one.
My technology's a little slow right now. Apologize. Your, I apologize. That should say, "Licensee is responsible, not the licensor."
Okay, so.
Does he know that?
He does. It was discussed with Attorney Levinson that he is responsible for the maintenance of that area. Not that we expect there to be any maintenance in that area, but to the extent that. the, the grass grows six inches and he wants it down to four inches, he will have to mow it.
So it should be the license.
So licensor should become licensee.
And then of the licensor area during the terms, isn't.
It's of the license area.
Oh, of the area that he's licensing.
Which is a defined term.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Getting back to the original contract, Michael. Or, or Anthony, what was the fee gonna be this year? Eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred thousand?
Nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So it was about a million. Alright, 'cause if you do the math on the forty-one tons a month, at a hundred dollars a ton, we're over, you know, we're well over, we're a hundred thousand, or no, about fifteen thousand, over a million dollars. If we're paying the tipping fees and stuff, so. So then becoming a hauler, and, and we have an unknown tipping fee, you know, we're right there.
Well, we're.
So you're saying it's eighty-three?
It's eighty-three with Mirror, right, going forward, but we still have to monitor that closely, 'cause that's gonna be the issue, if you got it.
Okay.
It's gonna be.
And we're not locked in on the tipping fee, or we're locked in on the tipping fee, but not the amount?
Right. So under the Mirror contract, so now you, that jumps to the Mirror contract, they will set their budget, I believe every February, and then you'll have the right, if their prices become too expensive, to terminate your relationship there and go to another source. So it, it'll be an annual review that you will have to, have to engage in.
Okay.
So the way garbage men work, just a little bit of history in town. So we had this giant hole that was a town dump. And they always, you know, they said in the seventies, it was good for another hundred years. And then something, you know, peculiar happened. All the towns around us closed their dumps. And our town dump was only open for North Branford Trash. And when there were no other towns open, every morning, for anyone who remembers back in the nineteen seventies, there were trash trucks bumper to bumper, lined up the length of Zero Road and going down Route eighty, every morning. And that was all North Branford Trash. But then we fast forward to now, one truck, one day, five days a week does the whole town. So that's the way garbage guys work when there's a free dump in the neighborhood. You gotta wonder about our town employee who was taking the tickets at the dump, saying that they were all North Branford Trash, too.
Alright, what do you wanna handle first? The.
I think you have a motion, right, to go back to?
Yeah.
We have the motion for the contract with John's refuse.
Was that till twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, it's a two-year, it's a two-year contract.
So we had the motion, second?
Yeah, I made it and Joe seconded it, and then we had discussion about item D, the license agreement.
So we'll go back to.
That's the license agreement, that we're not voting on?
Yeah. No. So vote on the contract first. Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Alright, now we're on the review of license agreement for ten thousand five, Middletown Avenue.
No bulk trash pickup for you, George.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license agreement for ten oh five, Middletown Avenue to John's refuse, with the correction noted on page one, under item one, grant of access. To read, the licensee shall be solely responsible for the maintenance of the licensed area.
Second. Discussion?
Just one other thing. Word says here about cleanup, you know, any accidental spillage or paragraph E.
Yes.
Has anybody, have we inspected it before and after, so we know?
You're talking about the hazardous materials?
Fran's, yeah, Fran's up there.
Yeah, we, it's, I believe there's no issue at the property currently, it's just raw land. And it's kind of a, kind of a standard paragraph. I don't believe there's gonna be equipment there that is going to be kind of have, with hydraulics and, or I think there must be dumpsters and whatnot. So, this is more standard, just to protect the town.
Sure.
Roll call?
Well, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. What about the licensed area? It's not the entire sync property, right?
No.
Fran's, Fran's been up there, it's only a small area, what's there, maybe fifteen dumpsters up there?
It says twenty-one thousand. It's roughly a half acre. Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet.
What are we using for a description of that, just that aerial photo?
Uh, yes, that is what we received. It should be attached as an, as a.
It is, it is attached. It says exhibit A, legal description of the licensor parcel. And that's the entire parcel. And then the licensed area, there's nothing, but the next page has a GIS map.
You may have a black and, your black and white may not have picked up the
Highlighted area.
The color, there is a, you have the.
So one of these is, the area is highlighted?
Yes, on the map, the GIS map, you, you'll see a kind of an oval.
It's a proposed area?
Proposed area.
Like a little egg-shaped thing?
Okay, the, the somewhat circular area.
Yes.
Okay.
The rest of the area could even be used as a lot of, that's the only area that's circle, it won't be able to put anything there.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is a review and approval of bid number eight, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, specifications for roof repair to the former senior center, sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road, North Branford.
Looks like Fran, he fixed all his mistakes.
So Fran, you looked at this and did it as, from the technical aspect of, of the contract? Okay.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to approve bid number eight, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, for roof repair to the former senior center at sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road, North Branford.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is review and approval of bid number ten, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, specifications for roof repair to the Auger House.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bid number ten, two thousand nineteen, twenty, specifications for the roof repair to the Auger House.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is a review of job description for Director of Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, there was a revised copy that you should have highlighted in, in our.
There was a hard copy in the folder. And so all the yellow highlighted stuff is the new stuff?
Correct, yeah, there was some additional, one type O and a rec tra, MyRec program software that was corrected from the version that was put in the Dropbox, so it's highlighted.
Somebody wanna approve the job description?
We're appro, we're approving this potentially because we're going to hire. There's been no discussion on any of this.
Yes, we are.
This is just a precautionary.
Well, I mean, she submitted her letter of retirement, so whether she retires on the date that she did it, or two months later, or whatever, at some point in time.
This is precautionary.
Well, it, it's functional, I mean, we're gonna, I'm gonna need your approval tonight, go out into the market, 'cause as Deputy Mayor just said, yeah, one way or the other, we're, we're going into the market to look for a replacement, whether it's July twelfth or sometime thereafter. I don't know if, if the director is going to decide to extend beyond, and how far beyond, I, I think it's too early to tell, pending the next discussion on, on the, you know, commission itself.
Well, you know, we were blindsided by, on this, as everyone knows. And I'm concerned that the statements were made that the problems that have brought this to this point were problems of some, some duration, ongoing problems. And we received no, no heads up on this, this is causing a problem. There was nothing brought to us by the town manager. There was nothing brought to us by the Park and Rec Director, or anyone on the Park and Rec Board. I'm just baffled by it, and I'd like to ask, perhaps fruitlessly, how, how we are going to have a, a contract with someone and not have better communications and potentially face a problem again in the same way.
It's a legitimate question, but it doesn't obviate the need for having this in place in the event we have to go out and bring in a new person.
I'm not saying that, that it is, I'm just voicing frustration on something.
I assure your frustration, but I think, still think we gotta adopt the job specs for replacement.
We have the next item, we could really discuss that. This is just the proposed job description.
I'll make a motion to accept the revised job description for the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is investigation of Park and Rec Commission.
Yeah, the council had asked me to begin the process, and I have, but I have not yet concluded due to some scheduling issues. I did have a chance and opportunity to talk with the attorney, Attorney Marino, just to kind of sketch out the strategy in terms of moving forward. And I think it was best, or I think we agreed that, that meeting with the two individuals that resigned first, the chair and, and the other member, in addition to talking with the secretary and getting the audio of the meeting, which I did. So I started there, got that, and I've, I've listened to it a couple of times, gone through the printed minutes, talked with the secretary. I've now talked to the two individuals that have resigned, Chairman Lynch and Commissioner Palma. So I've done that. That's as far as I could get, because the chairman was out of the country until Monday. So I can continue and certainly go forward with the investigation, unless the council feels that there's some other direction you want to go in. But I have not concluded at this point.
Personally, I think we should continue and find out what we can. And secondly, a- as we spoke to Vinnie about, we do training sessions for the Park and Rec Commissioners. And, you know, we expand it, you know, townwide to some of our other boards and commissions, and to our liaison program. So our liaisons are all on the same page as what their responsibilities are, duties are to, to boards and commissions.
Yeah, I think you heard at the last meeting and the recording pretty much speaks to the fact that there is some issues about what role in, and they're, they're to have, and understanding that role and their responsibilities. So I think that, that from what you just said, a, a, a training workshop, definitely in order, and not, not just, I think we can start with rec, but I think we wanna look at the other boards and commissions as well. I mean, you know, running a meeting, taking minutes, motions and things of that nature. But certainly understanding the role as an advisory role, not a management role.
Well, I read the charter, and certainly under the Park and Recreation Commission, they're an advisory board. They're not an active commission. They don't have, do nothing with the budget, nothing with the senior center, nothing with the Potato Festival. I mean, they are an advisory board. Nothing with the budget, nothing with the director, nothing with any other personnel there. They have to realize that, that has to be explained to them, and they have to understand it. And I think if they were instructed in that area, we wouldn't have these problems today.
But as was pointed out, and I raised it earlier, this was not a one-time event. This is something that apparently, according to the comments made by the board members and by the director, that have been going on for a while, and we should have heard about this. This should not be something that has come to us at this point, under these circumstances. This is, this is something that we should have heard about ongoing, and, and that's a problem.
Well, that, I mean, if they didn't bring it forward to us or to the respective, if the commission was having issues, they should have went respectively to either the RTC or the DTC. If they were having issues with their commissioners, to have it handled there. And if the director was having issues, you know, her job, her responsibility is to go to Mike first, not to come directly to the council. So for them to come directly to the council without going through the proper channels, that's, that's not a reflection on us, that's them, they.
I'm not suggesting it is a reflection on us, Rose, I'm, I'm suggesting that it's a problem for us.
Yeah, but there's, I mean, it's, it's nothing that we could rectify at the private, they came directly to us and now it's in our lap. And so, that's, that's why this is continuing, and I said it at the last meeting, I don't, since it is under. since it is under investigation right now, we should have never heard from them at the meeting, because it was very one-sided. And, and it's interesting that most of the people that are saying things about it have never been to one Park and Recreation meeting, and that's all I'm gonna say right now, because I've been to many of those meetings, and we only heard one side, and that was not fair.
I, I would just like to say, though, I agree with the mayor, I think, I, I went back and read the Charter, there's nothing in the Charter, I agree, about the senior center, I think that has to be clarified, and I think roles and responsibilities have to be clarified, when it says that the Director of Park and Recreation is staffed to the Park and Recreation Commission, you need to understand, what does that mean, is, you know, define staff to the Park and Recreation Committee, I read that, I read that when, I, I looked it over again today, I think the Charter is a little different from what's happening, and I think we need to look at that as part of this investigation, and clarify, because obviously that was some of the problem, and no one, and I, and the, the issue about the budget, how, how did those two budgets get commingled, and when did that happen, I don't know, and I think that that whole issue-
That actually happened a few years ago, when-
But I think, I just think that-
And that was a function of, of the finance department, was putting the senior, their budget together with the Rec Department, so that it was one.
Okay, but I'm just saying that I think that we need to look at what's in the Charter, because we're not following what's in the Charter, a hundred percent.
Well, it's like, I, I brought this up a few times in the last two years now, or year and a half, is when, after an election, or after board appointments, commission appointments, there needs to be an orientation, because everyone's, everyone thinks, or believes there, or wants to do the right thing, but not everybody knows exactly what path to follow, and what the playbook book looks like, that's, that's extremely important. Secondly, Mike, who haven't you talked to in your investigation, or who have you talked to?
I, I just talked to-
The three.
Yeah, the secretary.
Right.
I mean, I have tal- I, I, I mean, not officially, I've only officially talked to Secretary Brian and, and that's it at this point.
Right, because, because at our last meeting, that was of extreme urgency, I thought, I thought that was an extreme urgent case that we had to, we had to take care of, because there was time limits to it, or time constraints.
We did not realize at that time that the Chair, the former Chair was gonna be out of the country, and in order to form the investigation path, we felt it was important to start with those who were deemed to be the complainants, so we could fully understand their position, and we could not do that until he returned from vacation, otherwise we wouldn't have been fair to the respondents, because we wouldn't be able to report.
And, and to my previous point, as, as far as some sort of orientation, if it's happening in one border commission, it's happening probably several places that we don't even know about, or, you know, and it's not fair to, to anyone, not even the, the people involved, it's, it's not fair.
There, yeah, and there, there's probably confusion also, because, you know, we're referring to the Charter, but the Charter, you have a Charter and you have an ordinance, your ordinance establishes a Park and Recreation Commission, the Charter establishes a Recreation Commission, and so, you know, I think, if I'm speculating, at some point in history, someone sought, or, or, some council sought to expand the Recreation Commission as defined under the Charter, through an ordinance, kind of calling it a Park and Rec, Rec Commission, and I believe that, because when you compare the ordinance, when you review the ordinance, it relate, it refers back to the section of the Charter, which is very narrow and very specific in what it talks about with the Recreation Commission. So, I don't believe you can amend a Charter through the ordinance process, you can only amend a Charter through Charter revision. So, you know, what you may have right now, if I'm being sincere to the process, is a Park and Recreation Commission that's operating pursuant to a Charter, and you don't have a Recreation Commission that your Charter requires, or your Park and Recreation Commission is your Recreation Commission with simply a modified name, I thought you, the ordinance kind of expands some of the language with respect to that commission. So, that is an issue that we would have to deal with, depending upon the, the direction, because I, I, again, I don't think you can, I don't believe it's a, a proper way of amending your Charter to adopt an ordinance. So, I, I'd have to look into the history of that a little bit, and why it was done, and what was the purpose. And tha- that is something that I started to make an outline up, to try to figure out.
Sounds like we're well on our way to bogging down on this, big time.
We passed that.
What do we do in the meantime, with the Potato Festival coming up, and Lauren's notice of retirement sitting on Mike's desk? Do we not instruct Mike to talk to her, and ask her to defer that retirement through the festival? I have.
He's been in negotiations.
I have asked him.
I think we should respect her letter of retirement. I think that we ha- we're bogged down, and we're making a big deal out of some, some volunteers in town that volunteered to serve on a board and commission, and they don't get along. Believe me, if I thought I could resign and call you guys mean to me, and have you thrown off, I would have moved, I would have used that move a long time ago.
But-
And I think you'd use that one.
But here's the thing, she retired, no matter what it said in the Totoka Times, she didn't resign, she retired, and the word was out there, there were rumblings and, and stuff, for almost a year, that she was gonna retire this July, so I respect that she retired, and when somebody retires, you hire somebody new. And, and, and I made it clear where I was at the last meeting, the town attorney needs to sit down with our board and commission members, and council liaisons too, and make sure that we don't act like people's bosses, when we're not, and that we understand what our role is, and I think we're done with it. That's just, that's where I'm at with it. Any comments?
I agree with you.
I agree with that, but I just don't know.
And believe me, I didn't wish to commit it, or hear anything.
Who we could step, who we could have step in, you know, two months before.
I, I'm fine with asking her if she wants to work per diem or something, and, and help out, that's, I'm fine with that, but I don't think, we, we don't want to be thinking that-
Oh, she's not gonna-
Right, she's, she retired, and good, good luck to her, you know, it's great when you can retire.
We're talking too much in funding, too much in funds, too much in, you know, collaboration with, you know, department heads and everything else, to, to put it onto somebody new.
Right.
What happens if the bottom falls out? Who looks bad?
I agree.
No, that, that's my feeling.
But we didn't get a warm and fuzzy feeling from Michael, saying he's been negotiating with her, did we?
Well, yeah, she's, she's, she's undecided, I mean, she, I, I've, I've asked, I, 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 'cause I, I know the predicament we're in, I know where we're headed, and, and I, if she can extend in any way, but I, I think there's still some unresolved issues, and maybe a work, maybe a workshop, and a, a education seminar, or whatever, whatever you want to call it.
When's the next Rec Commission meeting?
They could have it for the next meeting, next week, if only-
I think that, what are you doing all that night? What time's their meeting?
Yeah, I mean-
It's at six o'clock.
You need to set them straight.
But you need, but you have to remember, there's only three members on that commission right now, so they need all three to be able to attend in order to have a quorum, so if, if they can't, they need, if they're, if they know that they, someone can't make it, there is no meeting, and hopefully someone will notify, if that's the case, that they notify, so that you know now, and they either reschedule the meeting to a date when all three, because all three have to be there now.
But, or alternatively, and I, I'm available and happy to attend on the 25th, but what might make more sense is there are two vacancies open, and for me to speak with a full complement, so that I don't have to speak twice to that commi- to that body, so after the two positions, the two vacancies are filled, then I get together with that body and the director, and depending upon whether or not this director is gonna remain in place beyond July 12th or not, again, from a timing standpoint, I don't know if it much matters whether we do it next week, or next month, or two months from now, but I believe it needs to be done, and we can do it, I, because of this situation, I, I'm happy to do it direct with this, with this body, but we've also, we have, we offer, and we provide seminars after elections, and things of that nature, to help educate volunteers on what their roles and responsibilities are. So, that's something we can do late summer, early fall, for all boards and commissions, and anyone who wants to attend, but for this purpose, my recommendation would be that after the, the vacancies are filled, I have the conversation with them.
The only problem I see with that is, you've got, you know, we've got two people that resigned, and, and three people left, so obviously, the two that resigned and the three that left don't get along, or, or don't believe that, you know, something was going on there.
Or they misunderstand each other.
Right, so I think that, that, you know, the sooner that you can talk to people, and let them know what their job is, the better, but, I mean, you know, and then, you know, I don't know what we do, because we don't know how lo- how quick we're gonna get two new members.
Well, Dr. Lynch said he'd stay on, you know, so, I mean-
He'll stay on?
Yeah, he would-
No matter what?
Yeah, he would come back, stay on, I don't even know, you know, and you spoke to Victor Palma, what did he say? I think he, yeah, I think he's favorable for coming back, if, if Brian came back there, I think it was, what, I, I gotta tell you, but listen, I, I was under the impression that the resignations came at the end of the meeting, and listening to the audio, it's in the middle of the meeting, and it was just really surprising to me, that it was just almost like spontaneous, you know, just like, okay, I'm, again, I'm just, I'm just listening, I wasn't there.
Well, well, Brian's wasn't too spontaneous, because he handed an envelope-
Oh, okay.
-at the time he did it, so, so that doesn't tell me that that's spontaneous.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I don't know that.
Right, so-
But it was, you know what I'm saying, it was, so, yeah, but I guess, from what, what I'm hearing from them, they, they would, they would serve, they would come back.
So, let's put it on the agenda and put them on tonight.
Yeah.
Now, I don't think we should appoint anyone while the investigation is still going on, I'm sorry, but none of you have been at, none of you have been at those meetings, right.
Okay, Rose, but now, and, and, you know, you and I can get along and disagree, but-
That's right, you can.
You've been at those meetings, you never once came here and said, whoa, we gotta do something at-
No, I, but I did call the town attorney and email him when I saw things were going south, and unfortunately, things fell through the wire on that part, but I do have my email that I sent him prior to the April meeting, when things, when I saw things were getting a little out of hand, and asked him to come to that meeting, so I'm, and I, I don't, I'm not throwing him under the bus, but I just want you to know, I did-
I live under a bus, so I live under a bus, so that's fine, don't worry, no, I, I acknowledge that, that Rose did reach out to me during my April vacation, and upon my return, it got lost in the wealth of other, probably about a hundred and fifty or two hundred other similar type of emails, and I accept responsibility for that.
So, Al, if you want to make a motion to add a, an item to the agenda for reappointment, why not? So, so-
I'll be Q, under New Business.
I'll, I'll, I'll-
Can I make a motion to appoint it both? We're gonna make two motions.
A motion to add to the agenda.
You have to, yeah, motion to add to the agenda.
How do, how do we do that?
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to add the, uh, two Park and Rec appointments to the agenda.
Second.
Could you repeat that a little louder, I couldn't hear this.
We're gonna make a motion to appoint two people who resigned to the-
Back.
Back.
Back on, to the agenda.
The, the first motion is to amend the agenda-
To amend the agenda.
-to add this topic.
Okay, I get it.
Are, are we really confident? I'm going by what these two said.
No, they'll go back on.
And I, and I, and I hope they would go back on. Believe me, we all know that I can get a hot head and lose my cool too, so, no.
All right, somebody second that?
Anthony.
Second Anthony.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
No.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes. Okay, you have that, I want to add, um, item Q.
It's Q, oh, it's a long.
Reappointment of, reappointment to add two Park and Recreation Commissioners.
That was, that was the motion that we just voted on, right, was to amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda.
Correct.
Now, Al, you want to make a motion to add those?
So, do I need to make, like, would Q be for Brian Lynch, and then, then, we, we're gonna be doing both at once?
No, you can't have them both in one motion.
You should do them separately, because your vote could be different. Okay, so I make a motion to reap- to reappoint Brian Lynch to the Park and Rec Commission, the Rec Commission, or whatever we are calling it today.
Is that, so that's item Q?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
I guess it's gonna be separate.
Yeah, they're gonna be separate, oh, they're gonna be separate, yes.
Q and R. All right, roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
No.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Motion for reappointment of Victor Palma.
So, I'll make a motion to reappoint Victor Palma to the Park and Rec Commission, the Rec Commission, and whatever else would go on tonight, and that'll be, um, nine R.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
No.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglione.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into New Businesses, Discussion and Action. Establish new review account for police department from fingerprinting and police vehicle use fees.
I'd like to make a motion to establish a new revenue account for police department for, from the fingerprinting and police vehicle use fees, this would help, we absolutely need to purchase a new fingerprint machine, and there are other needs within the department, this will help the department meet those needs, because they are going to be now charging for fingerprinting, setting up a schedule for people to know when they are gonna be doing the fingerprinting, and also, they've raised the police vehicle use fees. I'll second it, so, so is it two separate accounts, or is it one?
Well, I'm confused what you're trying to do, because police vehicle use fee is meant to offset the fuel and maintenance that they expend when they're on the jobs, so we can't ask the general fund to pay for gas, and then give the money to somebody else. The fingerprinting, I a hundred percent, that's a totally separate issue, we put the fingerprinting into a reserve account, and use it for fingerprinting expenses, that's, that's totally fine, and for your, for your motion, it should be the 225 fund, which would be the reserve fund that we use for that, the vehicle use, if you're, if you're gonna put a portion of it to this pot, and a portion back to general fund to pay the reimbursement for the gas, we can work on something like that, but you can't put all the money, you can't ask the general fund to pay for the gas, and then give the money back to this other fund.
Okay, so, if I ask to have a, could I then amend it to say for a portion, from the increase, that they, they've increased the, the police vehicle use-
Right, so, what, it's ten dollars an hour pre- currently, what do you go and need to bring it to? to bring it to?
Help me, somebody from the commission, I forgot what the...
I thought it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
So the, the first ten would go back to general?
Right.
And then the fifteen would go to this, okay.
General fund, meaning where, general fund back to the...
Offset to, yeah, in the general, in the, the police budget, offsetting half to the ve, to the fuel and half to the maintenance.
But we were to put it in the cumulative fund.
But you're, you're paying for it in general funds, you can't have it, you can't have it both ways. You can't have the general fund pay the gas bill and then put the money somewhere else for other stuff. The, the difference, the fifteen dollars definitely go, yes.
Okay, the difference.
The first ten dollars would go back to general, and the fifteen would go to the cumulative fund, as will the fingerprinting.
The fingerprinting.
This way, the law set the tax burden down a rope, or whatever we need.
It's a 225 fund, if you want to put that in, in your motion.
225?
225, that's a, it's a reserve fund, we have multiple little pots of money in that don't require their own fund, but they're segregated out and easy to track.
Should get that, Michelle. Other departments have these type of sort of funds?
We have that, in that 225, there, there's a variety of pots of money there, that from, whether it's gift funds, there's, there's a whole, there's, when the police department does applications, they sell the applications for new, new hires, the ones that are there, and the cost to prepare the applications is out of that pot. So there's, there's probably about thirty-five things in there.
So are there sub-accounts within 225?
Correct.
Because that's gonna be the next problem. I can just see, you, you said there's multiple in 225, so...
It's not gonna jump out at you.
So I just want to make sure...
We'll make a separate revenue and a separate expense for these two items, and you can run those reports and get the information.
What other departments have these?
I don't have the list in front of me, but I, I, there, I can get a list for you. There's several, library, again, gift funds, when the friends in the library gives us money, we put it into these pots, and then we pay expenses out of there. There, there's easily thirty, thirty-five little sub-pots of money in that reserve fund. I can, I can give you exact number for you.
Do you think it's necessary for Anthony to craft this motion? And have, have the...
I want to understand this motion. I don't know what we're gonna ask the vote on.
They're, they're, right now, they charge eighty-eight dollars roughly for fingerprinting, which is the exact fee that the state charges them, to walk them.
And we don't pay any of the costs of the fingerprinting paraphernalia.
The general fund's been eating that. What the proposal is, is to, they're gonna add a surcharge, I believe it's ten and twenty-five, ten dollars for residents, twenty-five for non-residents, on top of the eighty-eight dollars the state charges them. So what do you do with that ten and twenty-five dollars? So they're gonna put it in here, so fingerprinting expenses, the, the ink, whatever else it needs, the fingerprint, will come out of that pot of money. And as Commissioner mentioned, it'll be avoiding the taxpayers having to pay for it. People that are using the fingerprinting services, the pot will accumulate, like a user fee, basically, and they'll reimburse the expenses out, out of that pot of money.
Joe, the automated fingerprint machine is, is running on a limp and a crutch, to try to get them through, so they don't have, they don't have...
No, I'm fine with that, I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about creating special funds that are designated for a given department, as opposed to, you know, the building department doesn't keep building the permit fees, they put it in the general fund. Town clerk gets conveyance tax, they don't keep the tax, it goes into the general fund. So, I just want to know why we're creating a special fund.
But it appears there are other special funds.
To off, to offset the equipment and the cost that they have to buy.
The alternative certainly would be general fund revenue, and the expenses would be eaten by the general fund, the revenue would go general fund. That certainly could be an option.
The only option is every time it breaks down, or we got an upgrade to it, we don't have the funds for it, we're gonna come back to public council, and when some emergency appears, start a friend deal, and we can't find the money, instead of help, you know, that software, that non-software, it has to be readily assessable for emergency situations. People come in there that apply to a school program, that have to be fingerprinted, it has to be done. People that are taken in as prisoners, are processed right away for fingerprint, we can't have them machined out. Right now, the brand, they go over.
So approximately, how much is a new fingerprint machine?
Between six and eight thousand dollars.
Okay. So at ten dollars per resident, and twenty-five for non-resident, and that doesn't include prisoners fingerprinting, because I don't think you charge them, do you? I don't know, I'm not sure.
No, no, actually, they can charge them later on, but...
Okay.
So, so basically, what happens too, is, is the dynamic of the police department, okay, not only, not only to replace, to have the sinking fund that you will, to replace these machines that go down, it's technology, that, you know, every three, four years, you're gonna have to replace these machines. Currently, don't have a machine that the public could go to without commingling with prisoners, if we have prisoners in the, in the, in the police department. Not only that, we're, we're tramping them downstairs, and, you know, increasing liability for people at all. The issue is, is that we've, I've heard complaints about people coming to the police department and not being able to be fingerprinted, because we can't get them down into the, which is supposed to be a secure lockup facility. So, so, so it would be kind of like a revolving sinking fund, the way that I was looking at it, and I know from the past that, that things like that have been done in other towns.
But I understand Joe's point, is that we take in all these other fees and don't have separate funds for them.
I didn't realize we had any special funds, so I'm learning.
We have thirty or thirty-five special funds.
Apparently.
But you're taking current fees for a building department, there's no process in fees, there's no, no, no general fund.
And there's, there's no equipment.
Machine costs, operations one, it costs money to operate.
There's the piece of paper he issues the permit on, I mean, we can always find an expense. Okay, I got it. I, I don't want to bog down on this, turn it into another parking rec.
All right, Maraisen.
Okay. Well, it has to be a little bit more definitive.
Yeah, could you help me out again now, Ann?
Yeah, the fingerprinting, the ten and twenty-five dollars for resident and non-resident will be put into a sub-fund in the 225 reserve fund, for the purpose of replacement of the fingerprinting machine, as well as expenses. Regarding the police vehicle use, the first ten dollars per hour will remain in the general fund to offset the fuel and maintenance, split on a fifty-fifty basis, and the additional charge from ten to twenty-five, a delta of fifteen dollars per hour, will go into this reserve fund. You want that in the same, same reserve fund, or a different pot? Different pot, we make a separate pot.
Wait a minute, doesn't this create an area of uncontrolled spending? It, and it just doesn't seem right. I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, 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 I, I, I see what you're saying, it creates an off-budget expenditure, that you're gonna have this separate pot that could be spent, basically, without coming back to the...
So, in, in other words, we could spend money on things, and then later on, need money for other expenditures, and those are the ones we come request for. So it actually, it increases our spending, but in an uncontrolled way.
It, it creates a, it's a, it's a user fee basis, basically. What they're saying, basically, is the user fee of the fingerprinting is gonna pay for new technology and the repairs and so on to the fingerprinting machine, that's...
Rather than budgeting it.
Rather than general fund taxpayers paying for it, and having it as general fund revenue, as, as Joe had mentioned, which is certainly an option, but that's not the, the path that we're...
It just, I mean, seems like semantics in a way, I mean, it's, it's uncontrolled spending.
It's not uncontrolled, because it's gonna be for the fingerprint machines.
It's uncontrolled, but I just, I just want to make sure we know what we're doing. Special buckets is, is uncontrolled spending.
I think, I think, yeah, I think what he's referring to is, it's uncontrolled in the senses that they don't have to come to us, they can just spend it themselves, on, on, because it's their special fund, I believe that's...
And, and maybe it should be going into a fund and, and, and expenses being requested, and, and they're controlled, and maybe that's sort of a revenue that comes in, that can get, again, reduce the tax burden if it's controlled.
Well, that, that's the way, that's the way that other account was, that we had the money in, they came before the council, and the council approved that transfer, or whatever.
Right, well, just rest assured that any expenditure will follow the normal procedure, I mean, there'll be check requests, there'll be sign off by the manager and myself, so all expenditures are, go through the same process around town, just not later, you have a little, you know, cash draw to do the things with, it goes to the town's process as far as expenditures, things like that.
Okay.
It's really our users' fee, it's coming from the people that are being...
Regardless, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not debating the additional income.
I understand your point totally.
To me, it's additional income.
Correct.
And doesn't necessarily have to go sit in a kitty somewhere.
Well, it appears there are others.
That's what I'm saying. Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just questioning, that's all. I don't know about any others. This is the first one I heard.
Well, obviously, that's me saying, there's thirty to thirty-five of them.
That or others is not a justification for pounding the wrong way doing it, yeah.
We're not saying it's a justification.
If it's the wrong thing to do, don't do it.
Yeah, I mean, building fees, that's a user fee, at, when you look at it, getting built, and that goes into general funds, so, I mean, that's part of this discussion.
Yeah, I agree, I, I get your point a hundred percent. Okay.
Roll call.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Sure.
If there are two...
Please do.
Sorry, if there are now two accounts, is one of them 225, and one of them will have a different...
They're both gonna be in a 225 reserve fund, that'll be separate pots in that 225.
They're gonna have a subsection to that, 225.
Excellent, I will not get into that, though, if you're, okay, thank you. So, Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
No.
Counselor Viglione?
No.
Counselor Candel, uh, Counselor Zampiano?
No.
Anthony, I would ask that, for our next meeting, you give us a list of the thirty-five sub-accounts of where they get money, and where they are, and who spend it.
Next item is general service mutual police assistance compact between Branford, East Haven, Guilford, Madison, North Branford, and North Haven.
Yeah, I think, I know the chief's here, as, you know, can speak to this, but this is something that the council has seen in the past, it's these, these compacts, and there are some changes with an additional town coming on board, so it changes, changes, but it's, I'm sure they can, they can speak to it, it's a pretty straightforward relationship that we'll continue to have, it's just that the contract is extending to add another town.
Chief, can you explain that briefly, the new town, and what the compact covers?
So the, the new town is Guilford, or which, which one are we talking about now?
The one adding Madison.
So that's the mutual...
Police assistance?
The general service, police assistant compact.
So, so it's, it's an agreement that, that you're already into with several towns. Madison has been included in that, and for services such as, and I believe it adds more protections to these individual towns. So what it is, is it covers us when our officers are in other towns doing things such as road jobs, or general, non-emergency requests for assistance.
Okay.
So it just, it just adds Madison, and it provides some more protections to the towns.
Thank you.
I make the motion to, to accept the general service mutual police assistance compact between Branford, East Haven, Guilford, Madison, North Branford, and North Haven.
Second.
Does, does this, is there a cost to this, or what is this?
Amendment.
No, there's no cost.
Roll call.
Uh, Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is South Central Connecticut Regional Traffic Unit Municipal Police Assistance Compact.
I make the motion to approve the South Central Connecticut Regional Traffic Unit Mutual Police Assistant Compact. I believe that adds Guilford.
Discussion.
That's the only change on this, is that it's adding...
It's adding another town.
Okay.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is approval of equipment purchases for public works. Have an excavator and a back truck.
Franny, can you explain these to us?
Yeah.
Because I know there was a lot of paper in here regarding these.
Yeah, there is. The, we're looking at, we are a member of Sourcewell, which is a, a cooperative purchasing. And what I did, I, I, the back truck is, was one of the first ones, so I went and I got quotes on, like, we, it's an RFP, so it makes you able to design your truck, and it give you the price of the truck, but it also gets you another vendor, the equipment, the type of equipment, so it's a little bit easier as far as going out to bid for one, when, you know, you're getting what you're actually looking for. And plus, you get the, meet the companies, the backup, the training, the back truck's got a lot of training involved in it, they have a lot to be certified, to run the truck. Also, what I did is I got the three quotes for you, to show you the, the amount that the three trucks had come into, and that's all based on the Sourcewell RFPs. Versus like the state bid, state bid is one vendor, if you were to buy in state bid, you get one vendor, like, if it's a back truck of whatever they're buying, that's why you go versus go out to bid, and then possibly get a vendor that comes in really low cost, and you end up with a problem, that's happened to us in the past. You might have a new company coming from overseas that's trying to get a truck on the ground, so they put it real low, and you end up with a problem.
So the Sourcewell, if I'm reading this correctly, the Sourcewell price is four hundred thousand dollars even, and then you...
Well, for that, well, yeah.
For the back truck.
For that one from the CNW, yes.
Yes, and then you have something from tri-county contractors?
Yep.
So that's, that was just to show, that's not through Sourcewell, that's just another contractor, getting the same type of vehicle, and that one is at four thirty-seven...
Correct.
Four hundred and thirty-seven thousand with the additional option of twelve-five.
Right, now, you have to put twelve-five in that to match the...
The Sourcewell.
Well, to match the, this, the truck that, on the Sourcewell.
Okay, so that's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand?
Correct.
And then Joe Johnson Equipment is the third one?
Correct.
At four hundred and thirty-seven, four hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Correct.
Okay. So that's...
Apparently, we can get the, you know, this truck from the one vendor, they have a stock truck that this spec fits, so if we don't go with the spot, not a stock, not a stock truck, then we're out for at least a year, a year and a half before the C truck, we have to have it built.
Okay. Okay.
But that Sourcewell is a, uh, it's, it's, it's not a, it's an R, more like an RFP than a bid. Like I was saying, the state bid, like, you buy, if you were buying the back truck, whatever one that they have is the one that you get first.
Okay. So, the same thing goes for the excavator? You have Sourcewell and then you have some other...
Correct. The difference with the excavators, those are all Sourcewell bids.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, it's like, once we, once I gave them the spec, that I was looking for each individual vendor gave you a price on it.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a motion?
But, uh, so, is your recommendation then that the, the back truck comes from Sourcewell?
That he was in the Sourcewell bid and we'd be picking the vendor, which would probably, which would be CN Wood. They're a local company in North Haven, or another branch in, uh, Massachusetts. They supply all the training, they have backup, they have parts, so it's, they, uh, they also train the, the mechanics on the service and repair. And it's lifetime of, um...
Training.
Training.
Okay, and on the excavator, is there a certain...
Yeah, we were gonna, we're looking for the, uh, John Deere.
Is there not, I mean, there's no motions that are prepared here, and there's a lot of difference. I just want to make sure we get the one, the John Deere is out of what?
John Deere is, uh, W I Clark.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, I would like to...
Where's the John Deere?
It's on page sixty-eight in our tablet, the W I Clark.
Oh, okay. That's the, that's sixty-seven thousand, six ninety-eight?
Yes. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the equipment purchase of an excavator from the W I Clark Company at a cost of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Flannan?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is the back truck.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase, well, it's, I believe we're leasing this vehicle, right? So, to approve the lease purchase of a back truck from Sourcewell at a cost of four hundred thousand dollars.
It's from CN Wood, is it?
We're not buying from Sourcewell.
They placed the bid with Sourcewell.
Well, it's a bid, CN Wood is...
CN Wood.
Okay.
It's a Sourcewell contract.
It's at the top of that, this page before.
Oh, yeah, I see it, yep. Okay. The purchase of the back truck for four hundred thousand from CN Wood of Connecticut.
It's a lease purchase.
Second.
Lease purchase. Second.
Third.
Discussion? Roll call. I'm not done. Don't, don't vote yet. So, Fran, you, you looked through all these specs and you, uh, you're happy with it?
Uh, which one?
The back truck?
CN Wood.
Is it a typo? One of them is a Freightliner one-fourteen S D and one is a Freightliner one-fourteen five D. And did you talk to anybody about that Allison three thousand automatic transmission? That's a light transmission.
Yeah, that's the, uh, I talked to Freightliner with that, that's the, the design. The engine's a bigger, it's a bigger engine, it's a, um, it's a thirteen liter. They do that to be able to put that tran- transmission on it, that's the one that runs the, uh, you know, the, the equipment on the back. So, I did, I did talk to Freightliner and Allison about it.
Okay.
And this here has a piston pump in it also, so it's a, runs dry, it's a, it's a tripable, it's a, um, it's an excellent, uh, pump. The pressures are way high on it for jet pipes, like the one on, uh, we're gonna actually use it up on, um, the walnut plane that issue we got up there.
Okay.
It also has hydro excavation on it. So, they have bases that let the back bolts out, we can staple down there, we can find utilities with it. You can actually pump water and discharge water at the same time, which is a big plus. Now, you can keep, you can keep...
In and out.
Yeah, keep rolling.
Any other questions, Al?
I'm good.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Flannan?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
My next item is award of bid number nine, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, sale of fifty-five Tommy's Path, Northford.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the high bid of twenty thousand dollars for fifty-five Tommy's Path from Executive Investments LLC and authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents prepared by the town attorney for the closing. Second.
Discussion?
Other questions? How am I, Paul Murray, no relation to the attorney. Question, I called to find out the town attorney, and I was told that they wouldn't tell me, is there any reason why? Anybody could tell me why I called town manager and they told me they wouldn't tell me who the town attorney was?
No.
And...
Should be...
Public information.
Is it public, right? So, if you call and you ask the town who the attorney is, they should tell you?
Yeah. It's him, right, him?
Can't tell you?
My name's been given out to many.
I know your name very well. Right, so, that's fine. And then the, the property was offered to the conservation, does anybody know where that is?
Yes, yes.
And does anybody know why the conservation?
Yeah.
Didn't take it?
Yeah, they, they demanded a survey, that the town did not want to pay for it.
Okay. And the deed on that, is it a warranty deed, is it a...
Be quick, quick claim deed.
Quick claim deed, okay.
Which was obtained by the, property was obtained by the town through foreclosure.
From a house, something that used to be there?
Uh, I, I would have to look at the history to find it, but based on the land records, there was significant foreclosure in, in favor of the town.
Yeah.
And I haven't done, uh, you know, a title search, but I did not see anything on the land records after stipulation foreclosure. But to the extent you have concerns, you should obtain your own title search. That's the, the best I can do.
And then also, now, the conservation did take it, that they did do that, and taxes, what taxes, if there would be any, does the conservation pay taxes? Anybody know that?
No, they don't.
They pay nothing.
So, now, now the purchaser, would he be responsible, or that company would be responsible for taxes?
Absolutely.
And then, is there any estimated taxes on that property?
I'd have to speak to the assessor, uh, and it depends on how it would be treated. Uh, it may be, if it's merged with an adjoining parcel, it may be treated as excess acreage, which would probably be taxed at a lower rate, but you'd have to speak to the assessor.
Do you mean existing taxes or appropriate...
Well, first of all, is there any back taxes, but we won't know that until...
There are no back taxes.
No, if we took it by foreclosure, on a tax foreclosure, that wipes out.
So, why wouldn't they give a, uh, why didn't they give a quick claim and not warranty?
Because it was foreclosed, you're never gonna get a warranty deed.
Okay. That's it.
The land trust also wanted a warranty deed and we said we wouldn't pay.
You wouldn't give it to them, yeah. Is there any issues, does anybody know any issues with that property?
We didn't want to pay for the...
Just wet.
Well, the, uh, it's kinda odd because the, what they wanted was only a thousand dollars, so it's kinda odd that they wouldn't give it to them.
It's non-buildable.
It's non-buildable, correct. It's mostly twilight, and I guess the water company has some rights to it, and a fishing company from the eighteen hundreds, which is probably gone. Anybody?
Rights to this property?
Yeah.
I believe the town is the exclusive owner of the property.
Right, and then there's, there's grandfathered in rights from a fishing company out of New Haven, does anybody know that? From the eighteen hundreds?
The Waltonian Club?
Yeah, the club. Yeah.
I did, I did, I did, when my assistant...
Had you not been hit by his office, we could have gotten more questions. That's what it is.
Never seen anybody back there.
All right. That's it, I think.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Flannan?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item is award of bid number ten, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, sale of one ninety-one Forest Road, North Branford.
I move to accept the bid of five thousand dollars for one ninety-one Forest Road from Mr. Newbig and Mr. Solentano and authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents prepared by the town attorney for the closing.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Yeah, so, that, that cannot be a building parcel?
Right.
When you're saying that...
The one ninety-one.
Uh, I don't, yeah, I...
Because there's been several discussions here over the last how many months? And it's been commented that it cannot be a building lot. And I was just wondering if maybe tomorrow can be a building lot, I'm just curious.
Did it go out?
I thought we put it out with the...
Yeah, but it, it was...
In the, in the RFP that went out, I believe there, and I'll verify this, but I believe that it says it's not a building lot. And what I will do is in the deed, I'll, I'll add a restriction that prevents, that, uh, that prevents any single-family or living dwelling from being constructed on the site.
Now, um, this, this property, if I understand what's going on, uh, is going to be divided between the two adjacent properties?
Probably, I mean, that, that, that...
Those are the two people that got it.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding. Now, with that in mind, it, it increases the size, albeit not too large, uh, of, of each property. If they wanted to rebuild on their property and put some of that new building on this that they've acquired, what does that do?
Increases the taxes.
No, no, that, what does that do to this restriction that there's no building on that particular piece of property? No, but it's not going to exist as, as one piece of property, it's going to be divided.
They're not gonna build a single-family house on it, they wanna put an addition on.
Well, about, about a year or two ago, this came up.
That's my question.
This came up, and I think it was Kurt that stood up here and said that it can be a building lot if it were constructed in such a certain way with a certain septic system, that's the only reason why, right. Right, so, the possibility is there. It may be remote, but it is there, that's all I was, that's all I was asking.
I want to make sure I understand the intent of the council, uh, because my understanding, the RFP said it's not a building lot, so we're talking about the parcel in its current configuration. So, if someone owns that fee interest in, independent from any other adjacent parcel, we're saying we would like a restriction on that that says you cannot put a, a living dwelling on that parcel. However, am I hearing if that property is divided and split between two parcels, so it's merged to expand the size of the adjacent parcels, that there would not be a concern about an expansion of an existing dwelling that might encroach onto this newly added area? I just want to make sure I'm clear of what the intent of this body is.
That's what I intend.
Why would we care if they did that?
Right, we wouldn't. Once it's split in half, there'd just be two...
Right.
So, there's, there's what, three, three little lots there? So, once they split that one in half, then you have two not-so-little lots, but...
Fine.
Right.
Go build two houses.
I agree.
I, I just want it to be clear, uh, for the staff, if the building official says, well, you can't build on that, that there's at least a record of what the intent of the town is through this body.
That's what I thought was not clear.
Once it's split, that should come off, that you can't, you know, put a dwelling.
I'll, I'll, I'll clarify it in the restriction.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Flannan?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is a review of responses for RFP number nine, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, feasibility study for North Branford High School.
I don't understand this, and, and I thought it was just me, but I had a conversation with Rose and we both had the same concern. Why don't we know what the bid is? Why do we even want to talk to people if their bid is way out of whack?
You know, it's suggested that we appoint a committee to evaluate and interview, and then after we interview, then we can see the prices. Well, what if the ones we interview are at the top of the list and we would never hire them anyway?
Who said that?
It's on here.
Seal bits.
It's under the recommendation at the bottom there.
Yeah, I think she was trying to, trying to get to a point where you would evaluate...
Seal the bottom out?
The very bottom.
Proposed fee is in a separate envelope, but we looked at after the interviews. If you were to... Pick it like, then we'll tell you what we're gonna charge.
Who thought, who thought that up?
Well, probably the person that signed it.
So, I would bring it back in two weeks with the prices on it.
Yeah, I, I would not feel comfortable, first of all...
Well, I, I think her point was to...
Whose point?
Michelle's point was that there is another, is submitted in this...
Who said she's driving the bus?
No, 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 I'm just explaining, she's not, you are, the council...
All right, I want to see the prices.
Yeah, that's, no, I'm just saying, I was just trying to give you an explanation, and that's fine.
Don't try and explain her.
Before you go to that...
Everything she does makes you look bad.
Before you go to that, Al, I have a different question.
You're being mean, Al.
I have to leave.
I have a different question. It, it, it...
I'm listening, George, I'm listening.
The rec, thank you, man. The recommendation is to evaluate the qualifications of the firms, and I thought that that was the basic function of this, uh, bid evaluation.
It says, and then interview those who the committee chooses.
Right.
And after we interview, then you can look and see once what the bid is.
But I, I want to know, is there any reason to believe that any of these bidders qualifications are, are not, not satisfactory?
That's fine, but if, if their price is three times what we've authorized for this study, why would we even want to talk to them, no matter how qualified they are? Why waste the time interviewing somebody about their qualifications if their price is so out of line?
But my point is that the, the evaluation of the qualifications should have been done, uh, on, on receipt of the bids, that not by, not by some other committee.
Right.
That's, that's what the purchasing authority...
By whom, by the purchasing agent?
The purchasing authority.
You mean as part of the vetting process?
As part of the vetting process, of course.
But the other, the, the other part of this is the Board of Ed really needs to be involved in this because this is for the feasibility study for the high school, and if there's a member or two from the council that want to be on the committee, they can make, they should be doing the interviewing and whatever and making their recommendation to us.
Correct.
Um, it, it shouldn't be just the council interviewing and picking on this, because this is really their project. It's with our funds, that's, that's why we did the RFP, because we allocated fifty thousand dollars for this fund. But Joe's right, if, you know, one of them is charged, is a hundred thousand dollars and they're, you know, it's way, that's what their bid price is, why would we talk to them? Because we don't have the funds, funds to do it, so...
Well, we put the bid out, it should, it should go to, it should go to the Board of Education.
Right, but just for, just for clarification, it's, it's not a bid, it's an RFP.
RFP, same thing.
To give, as, as Rose just said, that, that you, you want the, the members in, in, in the council to select either, either an existing personnel committee or the finance, you know, committee, invite the, the Board of Ed to have their membership in there to, to participate in this. But it's, it's an RFP process to give you the flexibility to, uh, uh, look at the criteria of these companies and not a, and not a bid process where you're gonna open the bid and say, oh, low bid is pick T S K Studio. and, and, uh, that, that's who you get because it's a low bid. And you know, you, you, they know, and that this is their first entry into, uh, a design feasibility study, and they're trying to cut their teeth, and you're saying, okay, well, we just wanna open the bid and lowest bidder, uh, and we'll take that. This, this is a process.
That's the absolute extreme, and I don't think we're saying that.
No, I, but I'm just trying to.
Yeah, and we've, and we've done this before within RFP. We're well aware, and we've chosen them before, that we're.
Chosen, yeah.
Fifty thousand higher than them before.
Yeah, I, I just think the RFP process gives you.
Understanding a company is understanding how they bid as well.
Suppose that's a part of.
Was this your idea?
No, it's Michelle had recommended, and I went with her recommendation. That the RFP process will give you more flexibility, not that this, not a secret. Where we're at right now, but it doesn't make sense. We oughta know what the price is, and then we can make a determination of who it is we'd like to talk to. And I think Rose is correct, it's really the Board of Ed that should be doing most of the talking.
Correct, yeah, I, I agree. And there's no reason you can't, if you can't say that, we can bring it back, uh, with the next meeting if you like, with the, and open, and have that documentation there. And then you can decide if you want to, what committee you wanna use or, or how you wanna constitute the committee.
All right. All right, so we're gonna table this and bring this back, um, at the next.
And I would think that the whole council and, and probably the whole Board of Ed should be looking at, if we picked three of them or something to, to look at.
Joint, a joint, joint meeting of both bodies?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we need to look at six if they could vet it a little bit before and see who's stepping into it or who's been inexperienced, you know, in this feasibility study. Who, who's done feasibility studies before? So, I mean.
So in the sealed envelope for their bids, did we, did we get a history of the company and work that they've done?
I haven't, I haven't seen it. I don't know if that's in there or not, or if it's in in the, uh, I think there are, there are binders that you've gotta go, go through.
Right, there's binders.
Yeah.
All right, next, um, is financial report as of May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
The, uh, report remains unremarkable. Tax collections again continue to exceed the prior year. Uh, revenue is about right on target with, with last year. Uh, there's a few departments that are showing up over expended, but again, look at the expended column, not the encumbered. Back to those in, and, uh, those will go away. There's a transfer on the agenda coming up for the ambulance fund, that's why that operating transfer is over expended. Uh, but aside from that, there's no other significant comments.
Thank you. Next is lease purchases, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year.
The, um, annual process of entering into lease purchases, typically I'm at your, your, uh, agenda this meeting to have it approved for the following year. And we have two of the three pieces kinda nailed down. The, uh, first one, you, uh, annually you do a Board of Ed technology lease with seventy thousand dollar a year payments over four years. The second one, you entered Mr. Marola's, uh, approved his backhaul truck of four hundred thousand dollars. And the third one that's up in the air, uh, I need to finalize is fire apparatus. Uh, the council gave the Fire Commission three hundred thousand dollars this year into their reserve, and there's discussion at the Fire Commission meeting as to, uh, which way they're going to go with apparatus to replace. So I'll turn it over to the Commissioner, Chairman Mr. Civatello, to come and address you guys to get your feelings, where we're gonna go with this. We can wrap this up and move on.
Good evening, Chairman Civatello, Board of Fire Commission. You gave us three hundred thousand dollars to buy fire equipment. If we wanna buy a pumper, it's five hundred thousand dollars, not three hundred thousand. So are we gonna do a lease purchase so we could buy one of those? Or we're not buying anything this year because if we buy a ladder truck, we're talking a million three? So I don't know what you had in mind for us with three hundred thousand dollars, but, you know, that's what I'm here for, so. And the chief has more information, if you wanna listen to the chief.
As, uh, as the commissioner said at, at the last Board of Fire Commissioners meeting, uh, it was a, uh, an exercise in how to address not only this year, but what's most important is that we deeply appreciate the three hundred thousand dollars that's put into the, uh, apparatus reserve fund. But what's the forecast for the year after, the year after, and the year after? Because if, you, you need to set the stage for the progressive payments for fire apparatus over a period of years to be determined by the ultimate cost of the apparatus. Uh, and predicated upon the decision that the board makes, what apparatus to replace dictates the, the schedule of payments for the lease purchases over a specific period of time. So we're, we're kind of in a quandary, and we need some direction.
So tell me, Joe, why can't you take the three hundred thousand dollars, put it down on a piece of equipment, and lease purchase the pumper for whatever need left over?
I can't. I just wanna make sure that's what you people, you know, are gonna accept.
I think that's what I sat down to hear.
So then I don't have a problem with that. That's fine.
I don't know if anybody else has questions or concerns. I'm, I wanna be sure I understand your concern. Is your concern that there's going to be an ongoing commitment to finish off that lease?
Yes. In other words, are you gonna put money in next year to finish the lease if we do a lease purchase or the following year? If, I don't know how many years you're gonna do it.
Town's on a contract where we've expended three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
There's a commitment to finish that contract.
Okay.
I suppose the council could vote it down, but we'd be defaulting on that lease and we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot. So it'd be pretty stupid on the part of the town council. I'm not saying we can't be stupid. We're not gonna let a fire truck get repossessed, that's for sure.
Yeah, but in the, in the budget, we, we didn't approve any trucks for this year. So we put money into the reserve fund.
Correct, correct.
So, like, if you were at home, Joe, you'd have three hundred this year, and you'd tell us, hey, we need a truck this year, we need another two hundred, and next year you'd buy a truck.
Well, it was in the schedule that we were gonna get two trucks this year according to, right, Marie, what was, what was?
Five-year plan.
The five-year plan. That was our five-year plan. We were gonna get the, the ladder truck and a pumper.
Right.
So.
But that didn't work out.
No, but, uh, we still wanted a, a truck this year. Now, you're saying we, we won't get one this year, wanna do it next year?
I'm saying that that's what I would do.
Instead of a lease purchase?
You've got three hundred, and then you, you get more money next year, you get another truck. You get a truck approved. Cause right now you'd be buying a truck that didn't get approved in the budget. Unless I'm seeing this different than the rest of us.
We put money in equipment reserve every year.
I agree. And that's, and we try and do that so that we can buy a truck when we need a truck.
Well, basically what you're gonna do is, say, say if you have, um, you buy a four hundred thousand dollar pumper, you have three hundred thousand dollars to put on it, on it this year. Next year, you're, you're gonna put at least a hundred thousand in your equipment reserve.
Totally agree.
So.
So I guess the question is, they wanna know.
You could pay off that low-interest lease next year, and then that truck will be purchased outright. Instead of lease purchasing it for five or six years.
Right, so somebody, so they need to come to us and ask if they can buy a truck this year, or is that what you're doing?
Okay, yes, that's what I'm doing.
So that's a different question than, than we started out here tonight. So it's like, can they buy a truck this year?
Well, I, they had two trucks. They had the ladder truck for one point two million and a pumper truck. So I guess.
But we.
We would have to be more specific if that's their question, can we buy a truck?
So here's the thing, you get further and further away from a ladder truck. You know, cause you, we don't have the money. So are we gonna bank money and put it towards a ladder truck? But also, what's the, so what's the need for a truck? We, our trucks are inspected and pass, and if they don't pass, they're fixed. And with your NFPA standards and everything, if the truck passes the inspection routinely, you can still use it. Now, they have recommendations on how, how long a truck can last, but they're not black and white as to when this truck is done.
That's correct, but the recommendation is twenty-five years, and we have them thirty-one years.
Yep.
Okay.
That still passes the test and goes right next to a brand-new one. It's pumping the same water, its ladder goes up and down, just like a brand-new one.
I agree.
But the, the, the only difference, and Al plays a strong emphasis on this, is that the, and you're absolutely right, Al. So it meets the NFPA specifications for the annual DOT inspection as required by state statute, and the annual pump test as required by the NFPA, which is adopted by the state. Uh, however, the construction of the vehicles have changed significantly with a strong emphasis on operator safety. And the safety factors built into the chassis of the vehicle versus the chassis of the vehicle back there.
Okay. So that's pertinent, need-to-know information.
Right.
So, so is there a motion on the floor for what we're supposed to?
No, we just have to. It's part of this. It's, it's, we can approve that the three items that is in the motion is the Board of Ed seventy thousand for technology, the forty, four hundred thousand for the backhaul truck, and then what we want for fire apparatus. For, and this is to solicit lease purchase financing rates. So if they have three hundred in their reserve fund, I, I, the pumper truck is five hundred thousand, four hun, I don't know.
A pumper truck to replace what we currently have, uh, predicated upon the decision that the board makes, is about seven to eight hundred thousand, and aerial is about one point one to five million. So similar to how Franny gets it rises, there's a purchasing consortium for fire department equipment in the U.S. Uh, that I believe, and I'll confirm it through Michelle, uh, that we are a member of or could join to give you the most cost-effective and proven price for apparatus today. And that's what most communities, uh, in the U.S. are using.
Okay, because I, I did hear the five hundred thousand figure before, that's why I.
We heard four to five hundred thousand.
That's, that's why I was a little confused.
Now it's seven to eight.
Yeah, that's, that's the standard going down. That, that was me that said that. I, I spoke out of turn. I didn't know how much it was.
So here's the thing, though, which truck, which truck do we want?
We, we, we know we're not gonna get a unit three, that's for sure, to buy a ladder truck, so.
Well, what would the lease payment be on that?
Well, we don't know. I mean, that's part of the.
What's the most important?
Right.
Is the question. You know, you have two, you need two trucks. What's the?
Pumper truck, it's company three.
How many pumper trucks do we have in town? How many pumper trucks? Even backups?
No backups.
No backups?
No.
Just three pumper trucks?
Those are ISO, right, not ladder.
And we have, and we have one ladder truck?
Yeah.
And we have three rescue trucks?
Two.
Got heavy-duty rescue trucks?
Those are two rescue, yeah.
Rescue trucks? So our question to you is, what do you need more, a pumper or a ladder?
I think we need pumper.
So the existing pumper?
Yes.
Would the existing pumper be a backup then?
Yes. Yes. That would be smart.
Well, then, Anthony, we're gonna need some, I'm gonna need some answers from you for next meeting is what, if we put three hundred thousand dollars down, would it be a lease purchase for the next four years, five years, six years, ten years? What do we finance it?
It could be four years. So I guess that the answer, the first, the first hurdle is. Okay, we're going for an engine. Is that the consensus, A? And I'll use eight hundred thousand, the worst-case scenario. When I get these price quotes, I'll get the eight hundred thousand, the four hundred thousand, and the technology. I'll come back with you, with quotes leasing for next meeting.
And do they wanna use all three hundred thousand towards the down payment on the pumper, or did you want to?
Just finance it over four years.
Keep some in your, you know, do two hundred, keep a hundred in your?
Right.
In your reserve? Do you wanna finance it over four years? Uh, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of unknowns.
Put three hundred thousand dollars and finance the balance over two or three years. Exactly right.
Right, or two hundred and finance over, the rest over four?
Well, can you make it through this year and maybe get three hundred next year, and now you have six hundred? I, I'm just asking, just.
Today's the seventeenth of June, right? So if I had specs today ready to go, to advertise, and that would take six to eight weeks, construction is at least a year. So we would not see that truck until over a year from now. Unless we found a demo that was at a reduced price that would meet our needs. And that's key.
So I guess my question is, does that roll across two years where we can add additional money to reduce the amount of leasing? I am asking everybody. If it takes a year to build a truck, do you pay for it now and start your lease payments now? No. Or do you pay for it when it's delivered?
However, um, often there's discounts when the receipt of the chassis occurs, and you pay for the chassis as construction pays for it.
I'm not sure when we've gotta pay for it.
How much is, how much is that part?
So Anthony, for the next meeting, could you tell us, you know, could you tell us, you know, what the lease payments would be, but also what buying it out, cash out, out the door?
Well, you won't have that number until you go out to bid. My number's gonna be purely an estimate of eight hundred thousand, which it could come in seven, it could come in eight, come eight fifty, I could go out to bid and get prices. Or as the chief mentioned, you happen to come across one that's a, a demo that, that meets your needs. So I'll, I'll do it as a two hundred thousand finance and six hundred thousand over three years for this piece.
Two and three.
Three, three thousand now?
Two hundred for her, three hundred for me. That make it better?
And then.
She likes to keep money in the bank. I like to spend it.
So you put the whole three hundred thousand dollars down now?
For me.
Fine, okay. Finance the five hundred thousand dollar delta over three years.
For Rose, for Rose you could do two.
Well, it's just an option.
Yeah, no, if you have the cash, you might as well spend it. You're not gonna make that money in the bank, so.
But, but the other thing is, can you pay it off at, at?
Yes, they all have early, early, uh, payment options.
And what are we gonna want to know about this hypothetical, uh, sitting on the floor, uh, demo?
Usually you have chief shows over the summer, you know, the back, backrations over the summer. So that's when the, the apparatus, they have the shows, they offer it. So that's why if, if we were gonna do something, we'd have to know now because if they come to us in July and say, listen, we got a, a two thousand nineteen Ford model that's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, we have to act on it right away. But usually the shows are, like they have at the Boeheim, it's all over the state of Connecticut, and they're usually June, July, and August.
So if you go there, it's a crapshoot.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if they know you're looking for one, they usually go. We go to the show.
Can you bring, can you bring Counselor Miller while you do the show? He's gonna wanna drive the truck.
So Anthony, that, so the motion that is proposed, do you want us to wait until you come back and do this all in one? Or can we do the technology and the backhaul truck?
Well, it'll, it'll be one package deal. So we can't, we can't proceed until we get all three pieces.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're gonna table the lease purchases also.
Okay, reappropriation of surplus budget, bal, of surplus balances and complete capital project funds.
This is an exercise we go through regularly, uh, as we work on the capital plan to close out a couple of, uh, capital project funds. The first one, the larger one, uh, being phase one of the NBHS roof project. We had put four hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly from the library surplus towards that project, and then subsequently decided to apply for state aid. And the state grant came in and resulted in the surplus of funds there. Uh, same thing with the other one, a smaller amount, that was the balance of the roof project. Both of those have now been resolved. All the money's been received, and resulting is about three hundred thirteen thousand dollars that we could roll into the nineteen twenty capital improvement plan, uh, as we go to finalize that over the summer.
Ever motions?
There's a couple of motions, sir.
Okay, so the first motion is, whereas the two thousand eleven, twelve Capital Improvement Fund, Fund four sixty was created to separately. Fund four sixty was created to separately account for the capital projects for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twelve. Whereas the projects delineated in this fund are deemed to be complete, and whereas there remains a balance of approximately two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars of cash in that fund. And all of that balance will be identified as one of the other funds referenced above in the two thousand nineteen twenty CIP. It should be explained that we received a hundred eighty thousand of state school construction grants for this project that was not anticipated. Additionally, four hundred and thirty-three thousand was transferred from the library construction fund, which was the anticipated cost of phase one. We actually spent around three hundred and eighty thousand. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council directs the Treasurer Finance Director to reappropriate the entire balance of Fund four sixty to the two thousand nineteen twenty CIP plan, Fund four sixty-eight. And Fund four sixty is to be closed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vidleone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
We have motion two.
Whereas the two thousand twelve thirteen capital project fund, Fund four sixty-one, was created to separately account for the cost of capital projects in the two thousand twelve thirteen fiscal year. And whereas the projects delineated in this fund are deemed to be complete. And whereas there remains a balance of approximately seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars of cash in that fund. And all of that balance will be identified as one of the other funds referenced above in the two thousand nineteen twenty CIP. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council directs the Treasurer Finance Director to reappropriate the entire balance of Fund four sixty-one to the two thousand nineteen twenty capital improvement plan, Fund four sixty-eight. And Fund four sixty-one to be closed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vidleone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
So I just have a question, I guess, this, so this three hundred and thirteen thousand under, you know, where?
That's not there currently yet.
No, I know, but I just wanted, like, other funds, meaning fund balance?
Well, another column would be there other funds, we've done in the past. So there'll be other projects that you may be able to do now that you unable to do previously. Also, there's been an opportunity for people who have previously approved projects, numbers may have changed, additional cost estimates may have come in, need to be tweaked, we can take some of the money out of this pot of mine.
Okay, so the fire apparatus that we are getting numbers on, we could have additional.
Yeah, that's for sure, certainly.
Potentially.
Sure.
Depending on what, so that's, that's what that fund, it just sits there?
It sits there for you to.
Appropriate wherever.
Exactly.
Okay.
Next is State Aid Final Analysis, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
A little bit of good news as it relates to the final nineteen twenty state budget. Our ECS grant ended up being about two hundred thousand dollars more than we budgeted even after we revised it. And the teachers retirement fund cost of eighty-three thousand, five eleven went away. So we're up about two hundred and eighty-five thousand going into the year, which is good news.
Thank you. Next is appropriation transfers.
Appropriation transfers, again, the largest at the bottom being just the budget compliance with the ambulance fund transfer from the ambulance department down to the operating transfers, and some fire budget transfers at the top of the page relating to some equipment that Counselor Vidleone had mentioned earlier about replacing some obsolete equipment. The other two are relatively small.
Motion approved.
Make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the Treasurer Finance Director.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vidleone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is approval of tax refunds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vidleone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
The next item is contingency appropriations.
Relatively straightforward, this is the second and final payment as part of an agreement that was reached back on June of two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account one oh one forty-seven oh three seven six zero 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 and transfer into the appropriate account as soon as possible for the following purpose. This final payment per the settlement approved on six twenty-seven, uh, two thousand eighteen of one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vidleone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
All right, next item is firehouse lease.
Okay, as part of our discussion at our finance committee meeting tonight, um, we discussed the firehouse leases and the town manager has had some discussion with three fire companies. And we have discovered that part of the history of this is this was started many, many years ago in the nineteen thirties or forties, not exactly sure. But we haven't had anything, there was something that was signed a few years ago, but we don't really have any type of lease with them. And so, given, um, the nature of the time and everything else and what has been, you know, going on, we just felt we needed to tighten this piece up and that we need, um, to have the town attorney look at, look at these and to come up with something that we can, that is fair and equitable amongst all three firehouses, um, on here. And we didn't, it's definitely not a decision that just the finance committee should make, should come to the full council as to what direction we want to go. So this is what you have in front of you, that this is what was handed out to us tonight. And so it's up for discussion as to the way you, the council would like to move forward on this.
I'd like to see what, what we paid per month last year, so I know whether this is a good deal for us, good deal for them.
I think those numbers are last year's.
But the numbers that are in here is, we were told, are the current prices.
And nothing has been signed since two thousand fifteen. It's just been ignored, well, paid, but.
No extension agreement, no agreement. Do we need a motion to send it to the town attorney? Or we could just request the town attorney?
Oh, then we gotta send it to him and look at it.
I would think we should. Do we wanna make a motion to send the leases to the town attorney?
And what?
If you need a motion, I'll make that motion.
And authorized to negotiate with them, or, because this is, this has not been agreed upon by either side, just so that you know.
I think it should be the town manager and town attorney.
Right, and then maybe what we could do is, on your next meeting, we could put it on as per executive session so we could discuss it, since we'll be in negotiations.
So I'd like to make a motion to, um, have the town attorney and the town manager review and negotiate, start negotiations on the fire leases.
Second, sorry. Discussion.
So would you wanna write in, so it's something that you know, on, on something like this, would you write in like? It, you know, it's this number and then it goes up like whatever the federal cost of living is, or whatever, I don't know how, how we'd work with the rent or something, but.
Yeah, we're looking to make it like a multi-year and.
Maybe, maybe what we should do is engage in the negotiation process and, and have a conversation in an executive session setting so that we're not broadcasting to the party with whom we're gonna be negotiating what our thoughts are. Otherwise it kinda undermined the negotiation process.
Well, part, part of, I think what we wanted to do is, is have you review it.
Until they disagree and.
Have it reviewed because, um, you know, it's always been a handshake agreement. And just to make sure, you know, everybody's protected, the, the companies, you know, 'cause I mean, they are, they are our town. So we just gotta make sure everybody, you know, everything's correct, I mean, we're two thousand nineteen, it's time to, to make it so that everybody's protected, you know?
And, and it's, it's, it's your right to discuss it, I, I just caution that to the extent you're gonna get into substance of the lease that may.
Right, and, and anything that you can bring back will be in an executive session on the negotiations.
I would, I would say.
Yes. Roll call. You got a motion? Close.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vidleone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Does anyone object to hearing from Kenny, he had his arm up?
I can wait, I'll wait till.
Citizen's statement, okay.
Our next item is employment agreement for Deputy Chief of Police.
I would like to make a motion to approve the contract with the Deputy Chief of Police with two corrections within the document. On page two, term of employment, it should say five, and then parentheses, five years, ending on June thirtieth, two, twenty twenty-five.
Four. Starts twenty nineteen, it should go to twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
Good, good, somebody second? Not yet.
Anyone wanna second it?
I'll second.
Who did, did your office do this, huh?
No, no, this was actually forwarded to me, uh, the police commission took the chief's contract that was previously approved and modified. So I have not, my office did review this today, I do have some suggested edits that I can go through now, not, not many, but no, my office did not prepare the document in its present form.
I, we all got it at the beginning of the meeting, I literally went through it for, you know, more than three minutes and, and picked out a couple typos just in a casual review. I think we might have a chance to read it, and definitely our town attorney gonna be reviewing it before we're voting on it. Is it critical that it be voted on at tonight's meeting?
It's critical in the sense that they want it to start on July one, yes.
Why the heck did it come to us on ten minutes before seven tonight?
It was acted upon, it was acted upon at a special meeting of the police commission tonight at five PM. I was told that Attorney Zabel did review it.
Well, uh, yes, today, uh, and, uh, he forwarded me his comments, uh, toward the end of the day, and I, I can run through the comments. If you'd like, we can go through it. Uh, I appreciate the statement, uh, and ordinarily, we would want to afford the council members as much time as possible before a meeting to review it. Uh, and, but it's my understanding that there's a, uh, financial benefit, uh, to starting at July one because of Lieutenant Lovelace would make under his existing arrangement with overtime that would not be paid through this new arrangement. So, uh, that was, I believe, the reasoning behind getting it starting, uh, started on July one and trying to get it approved tonight. But there, there are some corrections that need to be made.
And how are we gonna deal with those corrections?
I mean, I can run through the document with you now, and, and I have them highlighted on my computer, and I can run through them, and we can discuss them, or whatever the will of the body is, if you. Joe, if you need more time.
I, I think it's bad practice to rush.
I'm not telling you what.
No, no, I know, I'm, I'm making a comment, I'm just having to be looking towards you.
I'm under that bus. So I can't, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I can't vote in favor of anything tonight because somehow I only got two of the firehouse rental agreements, and I did not get that contract at my desk, so I know I'm, you know, people don't like me, but I'm not gonna vote on it. I haven't seen it.
It's that guy under the bus.
All right, you wanna table this? Yeah, I don't get the urgency, so make it retroactive on, I mean, in a July tenth or whatever it is, to July first.
I'll tell you the truth.
And you adjust the guy's compensation?
I like to look it over.
I mean, I'd like to see Vinnie's office's comments in a, in a red light or something, and, and get the final contract, and it ought to go back to the police commission. If we're changing anything material, they ought to be able to see it as well.
Okay, they did approve, they did approve it this evening, so they would have to have another meeting, I, I would guess.
That's fine, they can have another meeting. Yeah, it's my, it's, and I, I spoke to the chair, I, I believe their action was to approve it subject to the town attorney's review and the town council's approval. So I believe that's the action they took this evening, but I'd have to verify that, that's, I'd have to verify that at their minutes, but that's, I believe what.
Well, I, I, I think they basically approved it tonight.
As is?
Yes.
Okay. Because there is like on page two, just.
The attorney was approved, approved pending council's acceptance. It's not a big deal if you guys vote on it tonight. The deputy chief's spot, who's gonna be taking the spot, is leaving for thirty days to go on the FBI training, in Toronto, I believe it is. And it was cheaper if we put him on as the deputy chief now, and pay him substantial overtime, because once he gets back from there, he'll directly approve. We did, uh, vote to approve it pending council approval and attorney's approval.
We're only two weeks out. Yeah, we're only two weeks out.
They put me under the bus.
Move the table.
Remove the table that supersede the.
Move the ta- uh, table till your next meeting, then they'll just come back.
We already have a motion on.
I second it.
Yeah, but if, if there's now a motion to table, and there's a second, it's not, that's not a debatable motion, and if you vote on that, the, the motion is tabled.
Somebody wanna make a motion to table it?
Make a motion to table.
Second.
I'll be second. Discussion.
There's no, no, no debate on the motion.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
They, they put me under the bus.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Vidleone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is a reappointment of Brian Lynch to the Park and Rec Reissue Commission.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Brian Lynch to the Park and Rec Reissue Commission. Second.
We did have, I thought we did.
We didn't do it.
No.
You changed the agenda.
We added to the agenda.
No, no, we didn't vote on, we just voted to add it to the agenda.
We added it to the agenda. That was to put it on the agenda.
That was to put it on the agenda.
You amended.
We did an emotion to amend the agenda.
And then added Brian and then added Victor.
Right. To the agenda.
To the agenda.
Okay, so you amended the agenda?
Yeah.
And then added.
One is Q and one is R.
And then added.
Okay.
And in those appointments, they're going back to their, their term, right? Right. But in case, but for Brian, his expired, so it's going to have to be a, a, a three-year term appropriate to the term. So I give it a clear vote of the 2000. So 21.
Brian Lynch to 2021.
Discussion.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm, I have nothing against the former chair and his resignation. Al made the comment earlier tonight about, you know, you get mad at someone, you don't like someone, so you, you quit and, and now you say you'll come back. And that's kind of what it looks like right now. I thought part of the discussion at our last meeting was, is that we wouldn't appoint anyone while the investigation was going on and the investigation is still going on. So I don't see the urgency that we have to quick appoint someone tonight. And it has nothing to do with the individuals. I just don't think it's right that we allowed only one person to speak at the last meeting when we were going into investigation and we only had one side of the story and now we're appointing this person based on an incomplete investigation. And I just thought the positions were going to stay open until the investigation was complete.
I'm going to withdraw my second because you're right, Rose. That is what we said last time. We wouldn't make an appointment until their investigation was complete. So for that reason, I'll withdraw my second.
So was that voted on?
We haven't voted.
There's no second, we need a second.
No, 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 Al's, Al said it was part of the discussion.
That was the discussion.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
No.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
No.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Does anyone know what Victor Palma's, uh, term is?
He would just go back into his term, which ends at the end of this year.
Okay, so I make a motion to reappoint Victor Palma to finish his term to the end of the year.
Second. Discussion.
Again, I mean, I, part of the thing on this, I also looked at attendance history. And when you go back from January of 2018 through current, through May, their last meeting, and I look at it, I'm just not sure that Victor would be a candidate that I would reappoint based on attendance. And so, and along, along with the other reasons of I didn't think we were going to fill these positions.
Well, we have to the end of the year to see how that attendance improves. Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
No.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
No.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Our next is citizen statements and petitions.
Ken, I think I'm really prepared to speak, but I'm going to touch base a little bit on the fire department lease. I think most of you know I'm the captain at company two and I will be the go-to person for company two on this lease. I've probably been in the department about 35 years. The first we had a lease, I'm guessing, was about 15 years ago, give or take. Like, like you said, I didn't come prepared to speak. Before it was a handshake. We gave you the firehouse for the use of your apparatus. We took care of the firehouse and every year there was about a 2% increase that was just automatically built in. One of your prior town managers wanted a written lease. A lease was put together, signed for several years, missed a couple of years, signed for several years. And it always started, like the first of the year, we would sit down with the town manager, which we did this year. Okay, the three companies, huh? I'm speaking in behalf of company two. I know that company two submitted a lease to the town manager and to Mayor Duty via email and hand-delivered by myself, from myself to the two of you within the past two to three months, I'm going to say so. Because we always met in time to prepare the lease for the upcoming budget. The past couple of years, it was not signed, there were no increases put in there. So our, again, back to Al, you wanted to compare the lease. You should, I feel you should have the lease that was given, at least from company two and the members of the other two companies told me they had done the same thing. Whether they did or not, I can't say. It sounded like somebody may have mentioned that there were two, two new leases on the floor. I, I don't.
Well, we have a, we, the lease that we received is one for company one, one for company two, and one for company three. There's three, three separate.
Gated what years?
Well, no, it's.
These are not the new leases you're talking, these are just.
These are unsigned, proposed for this year.
Well, I, I know, I know yourself and Mayor Duty have that via email.
Yeah.
From company two. And if my other jobs here did, did.
Yes, they were given to you, they might, we had the meeting at North Ramford, our cafeteria. You're emailed and handed.
That, that was, you did the same, speaking for company one, they told me they did that. Whether they did, I, I don't know.
And these leases are derived of the leases that you've been giving us.
Yeah, that, that we, that was started off of. There are, I know on company twos, there were, there's a couple of increases were put up there. Were brought back to bring us to where we should have been by those couple of years that were missed. A lot of times, a lot of times I think we're meeting and stuff's not getting brought up to the council. There are some issues with doors, vendors that do work on our firehouses that had to go out to bid and the workmanship was horrendous. We had a door blow off of the front of company two due to work that was done by one of your vendors for your security lock system Thanksgiving Day. I'm up there working to put this back together. This year, in that, along with that lease, in there is the bill for the repair of a brand-new door. Ripped off, ripped the hinges, ripped the door apart of, of, of an aluminum door going in, you know, the walk-in door going into the firehouse because of shoddy workmanship. So that's included in there and there's still another, a bill that you will be getting, that will be submitted along with company two's lease very shortly to get the key, get the key, the security key, properly keyed to go into that door. You guys don't have to rent the firehouses. I mean, now I'm, I'm getting a little blunt now. I mean, we, we're submitting you a lease. You guys, you want a lease or you don't want a lease? Now, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. I'm, I'm always open for a phone call if anybody wants to know anything. Feel free to the whole council, anybody at any time.
All three companies sat down, this is a big perp read to present to you guys, I know it's in your court. It seems like Mike dropped the ball on it this summer, presented, that never happened. So now you guys have it and hopefully we'll get something resolved.
It, it, it. It almost makes it sound like it's going into negotiation. If you're going to rent something, you could offer to them, we could say no. Just keep that in mind. We're, we've been very easy to work with for, since the beginning of the department. The, the paperwork, the meetings and whatnot and the leases came up about 15 years ago. It just takes more of our time to, to sit down and it doesn't seem like the, the information is getting turned out to you. Mike, when you were.
Ken, this isn't a one-way street now. This is not a one-way street. I've been in the fire department since I was frigging 18 years old. I know what the fire department did and I know they, they never charged. When I was in there, they always raised the money for, you know, their, their, their rent or I mean, their heat, their electricity, everything else. Over the years, and don't forget this, over the years, the town sucked up the heating costs. The town sucked up the electricity costs. Town sucked up the telephone costs. The town sucked up a lot of money, you know, and now they're doing the maintenance on the buildings. So don't, don't.
Maintenance, where, where are you going for maintenance?
Well, for, uh.
The lights are paid per square foot.
For lights, for heat, for, you know.
Let, let me tell you.
Plowing, plowing, whatever, you know? So I, I mean, don't, don't say it's a one-way street. You know, don't make it sound like the town does nothing for the fire department.
I, I, I did not say that. My, my biggest, my biggest thing is it getting out to you. Did you, did you go over our lease? Did you ask me any questions, Mike?
I have, I'm not, I'm not there to negotiate your lease. That's why we have a town manager. That's why we have a town attorney. You know, the leases came through.
Well, then.
And this is a process.
You're not getting back to us, Mike.
No, right, because we had to, we had to deal with all the insurance.
You guys put, you guys put a finance committee meeting, a finance committee together.
We just started that, Ken. We just started that. So don't make it sound like it's been there a while.
This, this, this has been, this has been going on for years, Mike. And we still raise plenty of funds. I worked on a golf tournament today, probably two-thirds of my day to, to keep the funds down, to, to take to. We, we take care of the maintenance on the building. We can't take care of maintenance of a door because of somebody that goes out to bid and, and it's the lowest bid and it's shocking, it doesn't work.
Who let him in?
Who let him into it?
Who let him into the building? The, the.
You, you, you put it out?
The contractors went out and they were by themselves, they opened the door and went in there by themselves? Who, who?
It was put out by a security system? I mean, it went out to bid by your rules?
Anthony, who let him in the, who let him in the building? They're locked buildings, so somebody had to let him in the building.
What Kenny's saying is the workmanship of that prior vendor was terrible. The front door wasn't secure. We called, so as, as a result, the door was blown open by the wind and destroyed. That's his brand.
So that contractor put, did it work on the door?
Correct. And we since replaced it with another contract.
Did we go after that contract?
No.
Damages.
We've had him there numerous times to try to fix the problem that he caused and it just keeps getting more and more active.
Why didn't we go after them? Why didn't we turn it over to the town attorney? Damages.
We could. Still slow them in the process of being repaired so we can get the bills and, I mean, it's going to be hard to prove that he's.
Well, he's got a bill for the door.
Correct.
So I don't understand why it didn't get resolved through the legal course of action.
Can I just interrupt something? I think we're, we're almost debating something that's, that's not a dispute. You're going to have a lease, you're going to have a rent. There's just some issues in the lease that just don't make sense.
We have to take steps.
To the finance committee.
You can't just say yes, no.
Mike, that, that lease has been the same lease that you had 15 years. Not a heck of a lot has changed on it. And if there are changes, all I'm saying is feel free to talk to us about the changes and we'll gladly explain what changes transpired. There is not much change in there.
Well, you're getting, you're getting upset and I'm getting upset sitting here because I know we give to you. The town gives to you generously.
And we, we, we in turn give back. I think it's, I think, I think we both understand.
The way you made it sound was it's our firehouse, you don't want it? Don't take it. That's what you said.
I did say that. And, and literally, literally that's true. We don't really want to go that route, but it is our.
It's our trucks, we let you use them, how's that?
You let the town use them. You know, you, you know what? Without us.
Nobody's arguing, I'm just saying it looks pretty dumb, doesn't it?
Well, I don't know about that. I think.
All right, we'll, we'll, our.
And a little more cut and dry than you let us use the trucks. It's not doing me much good to use the truck. I've got plenty of trucks to drive and take care of my own things and, you know.
All right, the town, the town attorney, town manager will take care of it.
So you, you heard Anthony talk about some funds that were potentially available for future use. I, I think it would be a wise decision and I think my counterpart in the police department, I think Chief Holleran would agree with me. What we should look at seriously is go back and put the emergency public, emergency communications committee back to the table and discuss some communication issues. As I stood up and talked at the town public hearing about not being able to hear, using Paul Markorelli's line, in recent conversations with the town's radio vendor, that $100,000 that was put in capital may not do much for us. And you've heard myself over the years talk that we have a very small system that was designed predicated upon money that came from a cops grant back in 2009. So the, the town did not put much money forward to, to improve that system since then. And I think there's some discussion that needs to be reviewed with the public safety department heads, that committee, and our radio vendor. And I, I strongly suggest that, that's a potential use for some of that money.
Little Potter, I'm going to be talking trash to you. There's no place for people to put their trash if zootos don't pick it up. So Totucket Road, Franny will be running the dump truck up there because that's a nice spot to drop stuff off. Woodhouse Avenue by the soccer field, nobody goes through there, that's where our trash will end up. One suggestion, and I don't know, I mean, you can go to Cherry Hill, but you, you pay, you get rid of your stuff, but it costs you money. I don't know if it would be worthwhile checking with Guilford, see if they would let, if people at least want to get rid of their own trash in the proper way, if Guilford would allow us into their transfer station for a nominal fee or North Haven.
Guilford has a transfer station.
Yeah, I mean, let's look at some other avenues than the roadside because that's what's going to happen. You went from monthly to nothing and the guy's got a mattress and he's got to wait. And where, where do you think that mattress is going to end up? It might end up in the middle of a ball field, I mean, people are so brazen. So, I mean, we got to look at this problem, go with what you got, but in the meantime, see if we can, other towns can help us out a little bit. Like Guilford's transfer station, you pay, but you can at least dispose of the stuff. And I don't think it's all that expensive. It's affordable. Cherry Hill's tough, I mean, they charge a hefty amount and they're not the most affordable. I don't know if they would work something out with the town, at least have an alternative for people for a few bucks. Otherwise, our town's going to start looking terrible along these rural roads. Especially that one over by, what is it, behind Joe Boy's old farm. Look at that, they're already dumping stuff in there. You cut through there to get to the back.
Burelli?
Burelli Road, yeah. So it's only going to get worse. I mean, and, but we understand why, but we need an alternative and not a real expensive one. And I think people would maybe, if they have their own pickup truck or something, help. Because when you put it out there, I mean, you guys are, hands are tied. But we, we just can't say no and drop dead because people will get, get sloppy. They're pretty sloppy now. If you live by my house, I end up picking up trash every day. It's part of living on Main Road, but, you know, I think the heaviest thing I ever picked up was a windshield that fell off a junk car, but I never realized how heavy they were. So, I mean, if we can look at possibilities, look for a cure. Maybe it'll become long-term. Next contract, you might be able to say, hey, we got to bulk waste with Guilford, so you only would need the trash. It's, it's opening up new avenues. Let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Anybody else under citizen's statement? Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Everybody in favor?